Kwanzaa Cottonwood. All right, Martina Rice. I'm sorry. Okay, all right. And then I, Pagnotta, I don't see your name on here, but I assume you've signed up on some form, right? Is there anyone else that's yielding their time to Ms. Pagnotta? All right, so I have one. I think four people yielding their time. Ms. Pagnotta, that means you have 15 minutes, and I'm hoping you won't use all of those 15 minutes if you can manage. But yeah, why don't you go ahead and come up to the podium and make your remarks? And we're joined by Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Well, you all started it. Thank you for giving me the yielding the time. I had two other people there downstairs, but that's okay, because you may ask questions after my presentation anyway, and hoping so. In the meantime, I want to pass these out. I was trying to get these to you beforehand, but two different documents, please.
All this, are we getting the clock? Stop the timer for her. Ms. Pagnotta, if you'll hold on just one second. I'm managing the timer. So please set it for 15 minutes. Good, okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. Finance is at committee. Good to see you again. I'm Gina Pagnotta Murphy, President of PACE, Professional Association for City Employees. Have a couple of things outside of me doing my annual inventory. I had to come down and see you guys because I've been getting floods of emails, and I'm sure some of you may or may not know why, but it's regarding premium pay. There were no premium pay on, or will not be premium pay, on the employee's check. And I called payroll and was told that it ended 6/17/22. So we come Friday. Unfortunately, we may have some very disrundled employees. The ones that are aware of it today is through, because we were able to see it through Oracle. Now, I know that the mayor and you all made legislation to extend this part of the budget for July 1, but right now, there's a break, and we were hoping that, I didn't catch it, and I'm sure you all didn't catch it, I'm sure there's an explanation, but the employees are going to want to know what's going on with that.
So, do you have other comments you want to make?
Yeah, there's gonna be some more, so.
Let's just go ahead and keep going, and then I'll let CFO Bala a chance to respond.
Okay. All right, that's on the premium pay. Then, if you see attached document I sent to you called longevity bonus, and this was done by you guys, I hate to say you guys, I'm sorry, due respect, council members Yolanda Adrian, Alex Juan, Andre Dickens, Mayor Noah Will Quanza Hall, Michael Bond, C.T. Martin, rest his, rest in peace, and George Shepherd. And what this says in 2015, that every year, that the employees on their anniversary on page two, depending on your years of service, will get a longevity pay rate. We got that one time in 2015 and haven't seen it since. Of course, I blew the cobwebs off this when I went through my, you know, looking for the budget to present to you. I missed it, but now I found it, and we want to know, too, when would this be reestablished, and will it be retro? Also, if we can come to an agreement that we get this established back again, because it is the mayor now is Mr. Andre Dickens, that we're asking the mayor to relook at this, because his name was on this document, to look at this and see how we can find this money to get this back reinstated as is, that you kind of owe us, in a sense, nice, friendly owe us, but we want to see this happen, and we want to move forward with it. You all made this, we agreed with this with the union, and it stopped. We would like to have this reinstated. And for the ones that does, is not eligible, that's less than 10 years, but have given their service up to five years, we're looking for you to at least give them a 3% bonus, 3% to 5% bonus, whatever the city's budget would allow. That's our set, because we're very upset about the 2%. I'm getting a lot of feedback now, when reality is sitting in, that employees are very upset about this 2%. And not only are they upset about the 2%, it's not going to come to their checks until January, and by then, I can guarantee you that our healthcare cost is going to go up around September, October. So they're not going to see anything. The bottom line, we're not getting anything. And so that is something we have to readdress. So when I looked at it and thought about it and had meetings with my executive board, it was brought to my attention about the longevity bonus. Pulled it up, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, OMG, however they said. I need to pull a copy and let the, remind the ones that are still here, and I hate to keep beating them up, I love them to death, Mayor Dickens, your name is on this longevity bonus, and we want this money. We got to find this money, because it was promised to us, the union made an agreement with this team, that this is what was going to happen. This was because we had, according to Mr. Shook, some issues dealing with evaluations when it was supposed to have been tied to money. And that never happened, because evaluations was kind of ugly, fraudulent, made, and doing whatever anybody wanted to do. It wasn't driven by HR, it was driven by department heads, so things were going amok. And we came to the same kind of podium over in the city council, and we had some one-on-one meetings with the unions and the council people, and they came up with the longevity bonus. And we agreed, we were satisfied for a moment, we got it that one time, even though it was taxed horribly, but we didn't get it ever since. So we need you to look at that again. Evaluations, if you see on the part, the second page, Mr. Shook, Pace has taken up on after everything else was done. This is the first draft that we're coming up with some kind of viable way of evaluating our employees. This is just an example, the first draft. I just wanted to show you and show your finances at committee that we are, we made a commitment to you to get this done, and we're working on it. So I wanted to let you know that, and you can see. If you have any questions on it, or anything that you would like, of course, you have my phone number and email, please email us, so my committee board can take it in consideration and redo it. This is for show only, but we want to let you know, because the way the evaluations are set up now, it is not, in my opinion, and actually factual, right now, due to pandemic and COVID and all of that stuff, we have not been doing commitments and closeouts and evaluation, which it should be, that's the way it should be. HR is not driven it, or driving it, because we're not there yet. But we have a couple of departments, especially E911, that are trying to browbeat these evaluations that are totally out of order. So we're asking, for the record, to meet with the new chief, Sheerbaum, just for the record, and asking for any help from council or FEC or HR to stand as, stand down with these evaluations until we can get something, some kind of organization, and let it be driven by HR. And because this is affecting people's pay grades, they're affecting their liability working on these jobs, and I don't think it's fair. And to my, to my knowledge, I think E911 right now is about the only group that's doing evaluations. It's been driven by HR in the past, and we want it to continue. Also, we want to talk about unclassified employees moving to unclassified positions without their knowledge, and with them being, being done not in a, let's say, a departmental need, is just being done where they can get rid of employees, this is their feelings, because some of them, as we did our investigation, when you become unclassified, that was supposed to have been an astute classification, sometime dealing with finance, certain positions in finance, certain positions in accounting, certain positions in procurement and administration because of your job. But we're moving blue collar workers, laborers, into unclassified, they have civil service rights, into unclassified positions where they don't get overtime, but they're still doing the same job, they're making all of these comp hours, but if you know it's unclassified and you being exempt, that means you got to work so many over 80 hours before you can even qualify for comp time. And these employees have no clue that this has happened to them. Some do, some refuse. If you refuse, you're being told, well, you need to find another job. We need to grasp a hold of this. So I'm requesting FEC to request a Department of Human Resources to do a records report to you. I want to know how many people were moved from classified to unclassified positions, and what was the nature of that beast? Why? Because some of them can clock in, some of them don't have to clock in. There is a labor law around how you be unclassified. Then we have who's eligible for civil service rights and who is not. Moving right along, the next one is, we also need to define who is essential, who is non-essential, and who is needed on these jobs to get this premium pay. I have of yet got a list of that, I requested that, I have not, and we need to know. And even your department has, some of them don't know, or they're not sure. I'm not going to call anybody out, but we're working with them one-on-one. But I think the city council and administration needs to know, because it's going to affect the pocketbook of the city, who are essential, what classifications, not the people. And I think that's where the ugliness is coming in, because some leaders are looking at the people and determining whether they want them essential or not. We need to stop this, and we need an investigation. Who is essential, and who deserves to get this premium pay? Also, just for FYI, Pace has already submitted our memorandum of understanding, MOU, to Commissioner Norman, the earlier part of this month, as Mayor Dickens wanted to see it and try to hope we can get it designed and ready to go by July 1. It's in their lap, I just wanted to let you know that we're there, and there's a lot of new things that we're requesting in that MOU, and we're also hoping that city council will come on board with the mayor and the president of city council. Once we in agreement, we'll also sign that document, so there'll be a strong standing memorandum of understanding. And one main thing in that memorandum of understanding, we are requesting that every year, just like you have the training for ethics, training for sexual harassment, and all the other trainings on this portal, that this MOU will also be part of the training for new managers and supervisors and people, so they'll understand what the union is about, we're not adversarial, we're here to help you. We only become what people may think adversarial is when we fail, and I say we, because we are still a team. We fail to follow up with our commitments, as far as like the longevity bonus. Also, we have to make sure that E911, we need to talk about getting that fixed, it's still not fixed. And the fixing part is, we got to determine, when are you going to treat the E911 dispatchers, call takers, or any non-subventians that works for APD? When it's disciplinary time, they use the OPS packages and the police standards. But when it's time to get money, you don't see that. And so I've been getting, even on our podcast, yesterday, we had a lot of people, appreciate the podcast casters out there, but a lot of people were calling in, chatting in, they were very disturbed when they saw, rightfully so. This is not against any laboring organization, any employee group. Police getting the $4,000 retention, or the $1,000 public money, or public safety money, the 2% increase, they deserve it. I'm not knocking that, that's their nature of their job, they deserve that. But your 911 dispatchers deserve it, too. These employees deserve more money, too. And so we got to stop pinpointing what group is more important. For the citizens, what they see is APD and fires what they need. We get that. But some of these employees are citizens, too, of Atlanta. And so I've been asking them to call, help this union by calling their district person and making their complaints. And if they're calling you, then we're asking for your help to make sure that you sit with your colleagues and see if we can get something done about this money. There's money here still in the city. I'm seeing people, we got to retain everywhere, we got to retain right now, even in fleet. We got people yesterday that's just quitting, resigning, they can't take it no more, no more money, because, you know, we're, we're in competition for the first time ever with outside. City used to be the city of the honey and milk, and get money, and you can come and get good benefits. Now we're competing with McDonald's, we're competing with Wendy's, I mean, places that you would never dream, those are starter employments. Starter employments for the new people coming out of school, high school, to learn what it is to be accountable to work, not to make a living. But now you can make $18 an hour, where our employees right here, with 20 years, one year, five years of service, make $15 an hour. It has to stop, and it needs to stop today. We got to work for these employees. So I'm begging you, for what I'm asking you right now, and I'm getting ready to cut it off, so I didn't make my full 15 minutes, but I'm asking you to take in consideration, get with me, or me get with you, or committee or something, let's make this work, help us out for July 1.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pagnotta. I made some notes of some of the things that you mentioned, and I know that CFO Bala wants to respond, but premium pay conversation, the longevity pay issue, the question about the changing from classified to unclassified, the categorization or determination between essential and non-essential, specifically with regard to premium pay. You mentioned E911. Some of these we'll be able to get some answers today, but others, we're going to have to just tick, right. Oh, and valuations, yep. All right, CFO Bala, I'm going to turn the floor to you in terms of the ones you want to tackle.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Pagnotta. With regards to premium pay, I just wanted to reiterate that premium pay has been authorized to continue. It was originally slated to end at the end of this fiscal year, but the administration did make a commitment for, for the continuation of premium pay. You will, they will see a supplemental payment in this paycheck for premium pay, that will be on Friday. The payroll team is working on the file right now that got sent to ADP, so it should reflect on this file payment on Friday. So there was that disconnect, so I just wanted to address that, that issue.
How do you?
Thank you, and thank you for your diligence and awareness. We knew as soon as the first payroll file was created that we had to do the supplement right away, and that bridges everything, and it's continuing through the next fiscal years, the commitment. The other issue that I know to hear from, things to respond to, was the longevity bonuses. I would just caution that, I don't know what happened in 2015, but when we do anything that is bonus structure in nature, we'll have to coordinate with the law department, because there is some state statutes regarding gratuities and regarding what municipalities can do for employees. So in an event to resurrect some type of longevity bonus, we would recommend that that be a retention bonus, and would have a commitment back to the city, so that there is an exchange of commitment from the city to the employees. I don't think we'd be able to do something that is retroactive in employee performance, but we would love to have a deeper conversation and deeper law, a deeper dialogue with the city's law department regarding how we can meet that, that spirit of what you're trying to accomplish here.
Well, sir, I appreciate the word retention, that does make a difference. However, no disrespect, and we will look forward to that, but the law department, I'm sure, vetted this. So I'm hoping that the law department, maybe those folks are gone, we got some new people on board, but I'm hoping that they'll see that this was approved at one time by some lawyers in the city of Atlanta, and so we hope that those lawyers will see it our way and change the wording, because I understand, you know, we were here with this bonus thing, and change it to retention, because some, we need to retain our good workers and our lifelong workers here as well, and have some type, and that was one of the ways.
Thank you, Ms. Pagnotta. Mr. CFO, all right, Mr. Shook had a comment, and then I had a question about that as well.
Okay, so on that same thing, and Ms. Robinson was here then, my impression, correct me if I'm wrong, is that that was a one-year program. Nothing in the legislation committed it to being an annual event, but refresh us.
So the.
Identify yourself.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Amber A. Robinson, Department of Law. In 2015, pursuant to 150195, the Atlanta City Council amended the personnel code at section 114, 142, to create the possibility of what is deemed a longevity incentive bonus. It does provide that all eligible employees of the city shall be eligible for an annual lump sum longevity bonus the month after their anniversary, month of employment, and then provides a certain structure, depending on how many years served, for the amount to be provided. It does, it does anticipate that it could be given on an annual basis, but like other financial incentives embedded in our code, such as what is colloquially known as the sick leave bonus, the interpretations from law, the Department of HR, have been that it is upon availability and upon, you know, there being room in the budget and whatnot for it. So it does persist in the code, but that had been the previous examination, determination regarding this, it's upon availability. But to, I do think it's very important to note that CFO Bala did make concerning, you know, our instruction from the state, which we have a greater understanding of, we'll say, at this point, and I agree wholeheartedly that it, an examination should be done around retention, rather than the payment of anything on a retro basis.
Okay. So I wish we had written it a little more precisely, I guess, for all concerned. So are you anticipating that we would take this up as part of a mid-year budget conversation, which might or might not happen, because we just ratified the budget?
I know you did. And again, no disrespect to the law, I'm not a lawyer, but I know what I read, and I have a little common sense. And it does not say anywhere in here, we're pinning upon if we have the money. It says that every year, around your anniversary, you will get this bonus. Now, if we're changing the language, it could be, you know, we can talk about that for the next budget coming up, if we're going to continue it and change longevity to, instead of saying incentives, say retention, I'm wholeheartedly with that, because we got to come up with something to retain regular employees, not just APD and fire. We got to.
Thank you. All right, I'll make a comment, and then Ms. Waits has the floor. Actually, I mean, you got to be careful with the language in here, because while all it says is that all eligible employees of the city shall be eligible.
Well, we're to that shell and wheel and was.
Language matters.
Yeah, it does.
In terms of the law.
It does.
It does not state that it is a guaranteed annual payment. It says you become eligible for it, and then there isn't, it doesn't, there's a second part of it actually being funded and approved as part of the budget. So just be mindful of that in terms of the way.
Well, the spirit of this document, and you're right, I understand, Mr. Juan, but the spirit of this document, the spirit of this document, when Pace sat down with council at this time, was to ensure this was a retention-type thing, and if we're going to go back and change shell, wheel, was, high as been, I agree with you, but it needs to be done through the whole city code of ordinances, because that's where we are in gray areas and other items. So I agree with you 100%.
All right, I'm with that, I'll turn this over to Councilmember Waits.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Pagnotta, thank you for your service and what you do. I was under the assumption that the E91 workers would fall under that particular incentive and get the bonuses that the other APD officers received, and.
Well, ma'am.
I was of that assumption, and with respect to the $1,000 bonus, I know that I was very engaged in that conversation, and which I'm pleased to see that that moved forward, but I'm extremely disappointed to see that they were not included.
If I may, if it works in that, I'm sorry, so.
I was just saying, does Commissioner Norman want to, I see him in the audience.
Oh, I thought he was pointing to my best president, I'm sorry. By all means, sir.
Thank you, Gina. Good afternoon, Jeffrey Norman, HR Commissioner. So Councilmember Waits, you are correct, so the $1,000 that was associated with those payments from the state of Georgia, 911 employees who were eligible, because there were eligibility requirements based on their dates of service, so for those folks who would have been eligible at the time that those were identified, those individuals are covered under that $1,000, along with sworn police officers here at the city. The second point relative to the $4,000 retention bonuses, those, those retention bonuses were limited to sworn members of the Atlanta Police Department, so that did not include 911 staff.
Okay, and Ms. Pagnotta made an interesting point, and she indicated that they are used in different tiers regarding compensation and so forth. So I guess my question is, at what point do we classify them as a part of the APD system? How do we make that correlation?
So we do have different classifications of employees within the Atlanta Police Department structure. So of course, you have the sworn police officers, which is not inclusive of 911 operators. This council did introduce, and subsequently, there was legislation that was adopted, represented them as first responders, and we have conducted multiple pay studies for that group. They have received raises, as you're aware, along with APD and other employees within the city. They are part and parcel of the citywide compensation study, and so that is where you will see alignment for salaries across the board, so that is for all city employees. But that does not, that does not replace the requirements for being a sworn law enforcement officer, and so those are two different classifications, they do serve two different functions. So that, that is kind of where we sit at this point relative to that.
Final question, Mr. Chair. With respect to essential employees, would they fall into that threshold?
And so when you talk about essential, I mean, we'd have to define what you mean when you say essential. There are different classifications. So for example, when we have talked about, you know, when we went through COVID, we had two, you know, distinct categories, one were mission-critical employees, and then we had non-mission-critical employees. The simple definition there was, mission-critical employees during the pandemic were employees who were required to physically report to work. And so regardless of what your job title was and those types of things, we did have approximately 5,400 employees here at the city who'd never stopped physically reporting to work. That would have been our mission-critical workforce. We also have designations, for example, relative to essential versus non-essential, relative to emergency service, emergency reporting, so when you think of things like, you have these weather-related types of incidents, and who has reporting responsibilities, you know, those can be defined differently in different environments. And so when we talk about, and I think this was ultimately in relation to the premium pay, and so as part of the premium pay, there was an analysis that was done, I can share those factors with you. It will kind of set out for you what that target audience was, as it relates back to the requirements under utilization of the American Rescue Plan funds. It was designed to make sure that we did provide treatment to critical infrastructure workers here at the city, who had not in fact seen any type of compensation treatment. Because we did the analysis, we discovered there were certain groups within the city who had consistently seen salary treatment, but we saw those folks who were frontline employees in several departments, who had not seen any type of incentive relative to compensation, and that really was the target audience. We can definitely follow up and provide you with that breakdown, provide you with that criteria, and as part of that, we can also share with you, because as the CFO talked a little bit about the continuation of that program, you know, there's also been a determination, for example, that there are some current employees with watershed, that we are expanding the program to as well. But we can provide all of that to you under separate cover.
So with respect to the E91 workers, were they given premium pay?
They are not included in the premium pay program, no.
Is there a reason why they were not included?
It is, because I'd have to go back and pull the date, but you guys would not have been in this seat, but in January of last year, subsequent to a compensation study, all of those salaries were increased. So they have had compensation treatment.
Thank you.
How much of a salary increase?
I would need to go back and pull that. I think on average, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but we, we do have that, that data.
And also, it was rude of me, hi, Commissioner. So also to follow up on that question, to revisit the legislation that I authored early this year around the, the first responder status.
Yes.
What is the follow-up to that? Because as we know, 911 operators are very much first responders, if it wasn't for them, there would be no connection to EMTs, APD, or anything else, they're on the front line of that. So where do we stand with their first responder status?
No, so that, I mean, that legislation was successful, I think we did have the discussion, you know, that, that treatment does not, because we do. You know, that treatment does not, because we do not have per se a first responder classification that's associated with compensation. So that is, you know, we had that discussion. Of course, when you have those things like the state of Georgia bonus, you know, there were descriptions and definitions for eligibility, that actual compensation structure did include specifically as defined 911 operators.
Understood. But I guess one of my concerns is with, while we don't have a first responder status classification, do, for example, firefighters, police, et cetera, get certain benefits, especially when it comes to mental health, that 911 operators do not currently have access to?
No, we would have same availability for employees across the board relative to mental health treatment. And so those are things that are facilitated for all employees through our employee assistance program. We often do have the ability for folks to be able to leverage our insurance benefits as well for third-party providers. So no, there is no limitation on being able to provide that. We can better have discussions about whether or not some of the proactive efforts that are out there, because those are things that we are currently engaged in having those direct discussions, not only for sworn personnel, but non-sworn personnel as well. And we're standing up some separate support positions currently for AFRD as well as APD, and that would be inclusive of the entire organizations.
Okay. And so if you wouldn't mind following up on the legislation when Councilmember Waits asked about that increase, and also if you could please find out how much the increase, the across-the-board increase was, and send that to us. That'd be very helpful.
And we do have recent data as well on the, from a compensation perspective for 911 operators regionally as well as nationally. So, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, while you're up there, so that I understand correctly, we have essential and nonessential, but you're saying most of that is from the lens of emergency scenarios.
Correct. It depends on what the context of folks are using those words, but it normally does flow into operational factors.
Okay. And then there was mission critical, and that was during the pandemic when, and that was more those that had to show up. But that is not necessarily correlated to essential versus nonessential.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. All right. That's helpful. Now, do employees know where they fall into these different buckets?
Yes. So there clearly the mission critical, the non-mission critical folks were identified specifically. And for those types of operational factors, those are normally things where departments will provide those types of notifications to their employees. If those are things that have not been specifically identified, we'll work with the departments to make sure that they provide that classification to those respective folks.
All right. And then one question that I should have recognized, Michael Bond has joined us, and he has a question after this. But the issue that she raised about the reclassification from classified to unclassified, is that an administrative decision that can be done by anybody or supervisor, or?
It is not. It is not. So as you're aware, because we recently did go through the personnel paper process, those are normally legislative determinations. And so when you have a reclassification where the job duties may actually change with those positions, there normally is an impact to the grade. There's an impact to the classification, which means that you will have unclassified folks who may become classified. And obviously, there are different, you know, there's different treatment for those different bodies of folks. And so it normally results in a couple of things, different types of job responsibilities, different reporting responsibilities. It doesn't mean that that will not include supervisory folks or folks who take on new duties, but that does, you know, mesh with how our structure is defined within the Personnel Code.
But ultimately, as you said, that takes legislative action.
But it's legislative. Yes.
So that's on, okay. All right. Councilmember Bond, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Norman. Well, I guess my first question is, has the pandemic been ruled as over as far as personnel is concerned? Because it still exists because one of our members is out with COVID-19.
So unfortunately, Councilmember Bond, you know, COVID is, you know, evidently here to stay for a while. What I will say, you know, when we had made the designation for that 5,400 population of our workforce that was mission critical versus non-mission critical, subsequently, that program, which was attached to the hazard pay program, because we had two things, two variables that were in place at that time. When we first went into the pandemic, the vaccination, vaccination for COVID-19 was not readily available, not only to members of our workforce, but the general public as a whole. Secondly, because we did have mission critical services that did need to continue to be performed, those folks were deemed mission critical. So you would have had, you know, of course, law enforcement, you would have had sanitation workers, you would have had, you know, utility workers in watershed, you would have had folks at the airport, and a slew of others who were required to continue to perform those services. We did reach a point within the city and the broader community where the vaccine was readily available. And we have conducted vaccination events here at the city. We've made it available to all employees. It is readily available not only to our workforce, but folks throughout the region as well as the country. And so we did shift from that type of operation. And so City Hall had been closed during the pandemic. Other facilities have been closed. We are now back to a point as we all sit here today where we are back into a full operational mode, where folks, while they are leveraging hybrid capacity in some, you know, points and tiers, we are past that point of not being able to have all of our employees fully engaged and not designated by and determined by COVID, but it is determined by functionality and customer service delivery. And so that is where we have shifted at this point, which is a little bit different than you even see in the guidance that is now provided by the CDC relative to how we address, you know, potential exposure and illness related to COVID-19.
So does the, so have we changed the status of things like the hazard pay that was associated?
So the hazard pay program ended because those were two of the contingents that were associated with that prior program. That ended in June of last year. So once we were able to establish that the vaccine was readily available, because that was one of the prongs associated with the hazard pay program, and then when city facilities opened back up, then those two contingents were met, and that is why the hazard pay program was terminated.
Next question is about the transferring of a status of an employee from classified to unclassified. You know, doesn't the code require some type of notice to that employee of the change in status?
So the, you know, as we talked with the chair, you know, those are, those positions are done legislatively. You know, those documents are publicly, you know, available. And those are conversations that are had with the employees because the way the reclass, excuse me, the way the reclassification process works is that you are, you are taking a position and you are basically replacing that position with a new position title. And often what you will see, and you will see the terminology in the approved personnel papers, whether those are reclassifications with incumbents, or whether those are reclassifications without incumbents. Where those are reclassifications with incumbents, those folks then, you know, are slated to go into those roles. Often, if you do have folks who do not, you know, agree to go into those roles, then there would need to be a position for them to go into. And so that is where those discussions are had. But in almost all of the situations that I'm aware of, employees are made aware of that, and there normally is also executed a document that shows that shift from that classified to that unclassified status.
So the issue that Ms. Pagnata raised about some of the folks, obviously somebody's not been made aware or hasn't gotten that letter.
No, and I'll, you know, I'll obviously yield to the, to the Law Department, but, you know, what I will share with you is that it would not negate the legislative determination for that.
Right. So I understand that.
Yes. But we can continue, obviously, to work with departments to make sure that they are effectively communicating and sharing those, that type of information with them in a consistent manner.
Right. Because as a former city employee myself, you know, that's disturbing to me because in my experience as a city employee, and this was a long time ago, even though, I guess in a form, I'm still a city employee, that workers be aware and knowledgeable what, you know, what their job actually is and what their functions actually are. So I mean, what is the remedy for making sure that these employees are informed of what has affected them? And so you said they're supposed to be issued a letter, but I guess I will defer to the Law Department. What happens when they don't get that letter? What's their recourse?
And just to, just to jump in real quick. And so just so you know, we do have an established process for that, that we have shared with departments. Obviously, you know, I will take, I will take this information and go back and, I mean, we'll do a deep dive and have those discussions, look at how the compliance with departments with that process. But I just want to be clear, there is a process in place for those communications to occur.
No, I have every confidence in you, Mr. Norman, but it's obvious that someone, somewhere apart from you, is not following the process. And so employees need to know, and I'd like to just get it on the record for this meeting, because they watch these meetings too, as to what their recourse might be, you know?
No, and I mean, as always, if there are concerns from employees within the department, obviously, they can voice that through HR staff assigned to support those departments and ultimately bring that directly to my attention. And we'll review those matters and we'll go back and look at the actual transactions and the communication streams as well.
As your official recommendation for the employees who may be watching?
That is correct. That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
And I think, and I think as we've talked about on a lot of the other topics, you know, there are always training components to that. So I think you can never have too much information. And so that's something additional we'll put on the roster for making sure we stand up appropriate training for, you know, folks at the department level from top to bottom.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bond. CFO Bala, followed by Councilmember Waits.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Norman. One thing I did want to add to Mr. Norman's comments is that the guidance in the beginning of the pandemic was determined by the funding that was available to the city. So the hazard pay portion that we were under was also eligible for FEMA reimbursements at the time. And so that program was, was done in a duration of time when FEMA had authorized that as an allowable expense for cities. It had an end date, an actual end date, where we couldn't do any more hazard pay. At that point in time, we transitioned from hazard pay to premium pay. And so there was a lot of employees that were included in hazard pay that were not included in premium pay. And so that was the delineation of time in which funding was available. The premium pay has been in continuous through ARPA funding. And so that has been utilized as an authorized mechanism for premium pay. So they're kind of where the transition occurred.
Thank you, CFO. Ms. Waits.
Mr. Chair, I won't be late with the meeting, but I just want to go back to a statement that Ms. Pagnata made earlier. And she referenced that process, and I've worked closely with Commissioner Norman in transferring individuals. But for individuals to be transferred in a way that's punitive, I think, and not be aware that they're being transferred, I think that's something else that we need to also visit. I know you mentioned the legislative process, but I think what she's referring to is something very different. And so it's my hope that we can possibly have a conversation surrounding how we can correct that dynamic to ensure that the employees have some level of protection from that dynamic. Thank you.
And I would just say, the next time we have the personnel paper in front of us, let's remember this, okay? Because we will, we are the ones that direct the change from classified to unclassified. So that's our opportunity to make sure processes are in place. All right.
Excuse me. Are you finished with public speaking? Because I have two more people. I just want to make one point. If I can make that point, and I'm done.
Well, I was about to call the two people that I didn't have earlier. So Shawanda Wilson, are you Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Good. Good.
I will be directing my time to Mrs. Gina Fenn.
All right. And then is that the only one, or is Kwanza Cottonwood in the audience as well? Mr. Cottonwood?
You can say it from there. You don't have to come up. Just tell me you're directing your time to me.
You can do it from where you're standing. Are you Kwanza Cottonwood?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So you're yielding your time. All right.
Sorry. Very important to get along. I just want to make it clear, and I listened to Commissioner Norman, and I'm very respectful of him, and he has been working with Pace. I have to give you that. But things change. And a lot of times, like, I can't ever say your name, Mr. CIOFO, that change that you're talking about that just happened about the supplemental, it would be nice that we reciprocate information back to the union so that we wouldn't come up here and make the statement and we don't know what's going on. Because the people in the field, they may not see this until later, if they see it at all. And we want to get accurate information. We want to give good information. So when you found that, I just have wished someone, or Mr. Norman, or someone would have sent me a text, email, or called me. The mayor did. Mr. Odi, I appreciate him, when they talked about what you're going to present. We're just asking for that reciprocation back to give us communication so that I can make sure our employees, when they call me, and not coming down and storming come Friday, because you know they will, you know, that this is what was told to me, this is what you're going to see on your check. Right now, don't worry about Oracle. In your actual paycheck deposit, you will see your supplemental. So I just want to say that. The main thing I want to say, Mr. Norman mentioned, and you all had discussion about mission critical, work essential, and all of this. And Mr. Bond, thank you so much. You eloquently asked questions for me that was in my mind, must have been in my mind. But is E-911 not mission critical? Where do they stand? Are they essential? Are they work essential? Are they mission critical? If they're mission critical, that's the answer I want to hear today, if you can, by Mr. Norman, or whoever, then they need to be paid premium pay, period, like the rest of the people that are considered work essential or essential, that comes to work every day. Because these E-911 dispatchers, not knocking any other person that has come in, not knocking any other person that's on hybrid, these workers came in every single day and has not stopped since pandemic, when we all was at home, even me. They were at work. Somebody was at work, whether they were short or not. Somebody came to work. There are losing members every day. We're losing employees every day. They are still, Mr. Norman, getting sick with COVID, because we didn't put that shield up like I asked you the day that it decides. That's a little hidden joke. They are still getting COVID. So they are work critical, mission critical, essential, and this union is asking for a comeback, regenerate, and pay these folks premium pay, like the rest of the folks that's out there that's mission critical. These folks, if you don't have an E-911 center, you're not going to have any traffic going to any system. It got to look out for them. Please, please give them that premium pay. Mr. Norman, I'm begging you to get with council and FEC to approve, to pay these folks premium pay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Pagnata.
I want to answer the day if I could, sir.
Mr. Norman, I invite you to have a sidebar with Ms. Pagnata in terms of a response to that. All right. With that, colleagues, that concludes public comments. That'll take us to the next item on the agenda, presentations. First one up is Intergovernmental Affairs Legislative Update. I see Ms. Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Kenyatta Mitchell. I am the one of the two-person Intergovernmental Affairs Department. Sorry, I'm a little bit loud here. My partner in this is Deandre Everhart. He is, he is the manager of my office, and we are part of the mayor's local, state, and federal representatives. Y'all, this year, we had a good legislative session. So every, every biennial, so sessions are two years, every biennial, there's over 2,000 bills, of which there are about 25 of them that were detrimental to the city of Atlanta. And we were able to fight off all of them. So you can go to the second slide. Oh, I can go to the second slide. Thank you. Oh, did I turn it off? There we go. There we go. Our successes, number one on the list is City of Buckhead, so we're actually just, Councilman Shook and I were just with the mayor at the precinct opening in Buckhead. City of Buckhead, there were five bills that either dealt with full annexation or set the stage for annexation. We were able to fight these bills while the city of East Cobb, Lost Mountain, Vinings, and Mabelton all passed. We were the only successful one at the general assembly this year, so thank you to my team on that one. I really want to thank my personal partners at the mayor's office, the mayor, Lieutenant Governor, Speaker, the Dean of the House, Calvin Smiley, and all the lobbyists who helped me with this, it was a, definitely a team effort. I also want to talk about the airport bills. The airport bills are not dead, those things will come back next year and the year after. So, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that this is going to be a problem again, and we're going to, we're going to be there to fight against it. Oh, sorry, going back. Um, so, going through some of the legislation, just because I know we don't have a ton of time, Senate Bill 535, I wanted to bring to your attention, obviously, it didn't pass, but it's something that's also going to come up next year, it's an anti-homelessness bill. There's been a raft of bills that the general assembly feels that they can deal with our homeless population, not understanding that we've had an overall 63% reduction in our total amount of homeless because of our efforts. They feel punitive efforts would be a better option for the homeless, so we want to make sure that doesn't happen. Just because you don't have a home does not mean that you should be part of the criminal justice system, and we're going to fight for that. It was not all bad. Going to go through to House Bill 1013, this was our speaker's bill, this is a mental health bill, and the state of Georgia, never in the history of state of Georgia, has mental health been treated the exact same as physical health. It is now, per insurance, treated, going to be treated the same. In addition to this, there's going to be about $40, $40 million coming down from the state to local governments to help with mental health. So, this is a huge deal. We were able to work with the speaker so that the city of Atlanta can go after funds, separate and apart from DeKalb and Fulton County. We understand we have issues, and we deal with issues that are a little bit different than pure mental health issues that the, that Fulton County deals with, so we're going to be working with them on that. Our only loss, and this was really a mitigation, was House Bill 1405. On its face, it wasn't a bad bill, it was really a bill that allowed additional information about zoning proceedings. Where it became a bit of an issue is it would have cost the city of Atlanta a lot of money for some of the notices. We were able to expand the number of homes affected before notices needed to be sent out, which would reduce several million dollars in city costs, so it was going to be, it's one of those bills that is a good bill until you figure out, get into the details of how much it'll cost the city to comply, to comply with it. Going back to study committees, so there are going to be some study committees dealing with homelessness. The Lieutenant Governor has staffed, has provided the list of the, of the folks that he wants on these committees, so we'll be monitoring these. There's also going to be a study committee on the regulation and affordability of housing. The state understands, unfortunately, that sometimes regulations make housing more unaffordable, so we want to make sure that we're looking at things that the government is doing that may not help with our affordability issues. And finally, but not least, House Bill 1082, which is dealing with state and local law enforcement salaries. We want to make sure that all the communities in the state of Georgia have a good idea of how they stack up. This doesn't affect the city of Atlanta as much because we do this due diligence ourselves, but as you know, there's only over 500 cities in the state of Georgia, so they have different capabilities there, so this is going to really help those folks. I wanted to thank you, but before I walk away, I want to let you know we're working with the federal government. Probably the reason why I was a little bit late here coming in is I was on the, on the phone with our federal partners. We requested earmarks for, and I see Makita had just left, but a bunch of watershed earmarks, emergency operations, water, wastewater infrastructure earmarks, housing for public safety, which I just found out, is going to be sent to appropriations, so our public safety officials can get some housing. I know that was Councilmember Faroki's baby, so I want to make sure he gets a shout out for that one. Bridge replacements on West Lake Avenue, Marietta Boulevard, and improvements to our trail network and license plate readers. So, we're looking for all those things. I just had a conversation again today with the Department of Ag. People don't think Atlanta and agriculture, but we do have urban farms, so we want to make sure those folks are able to get their money as well. I will stop there for any questions.
Questions from Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I'm first. So, obviously, do we expect for the city of Buckhead legislation to reemerge next time?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
I think something that worried me was that it seemed that for the first time in a long time, they actually got logical about their approach and dropped some legislation in regards to funding distribution.
Yes.
Yes, so is there anything that we need to do in preparation for that?
Um, we are doing a lot in preparation for that. So, one of the issues they had with funding is they were trying to, much like King Solomon, split us in half, and unfortunately, if you know that analogy, it doesn't work. So...
We grew in the South, I think we all know that analogy.
So, unfortunately, if you cut watershed in half, that does not work, water flows, right? So, if water flows, we have to be able to monitor it when it flows into the city and, quote unquote, out of the city, and we wouldn't be able to monitor it coming out and back in, which could have significant health hazards to the city of Atlanta. That's just one example.
Okay.
There's many, many more examples of how it may seem logical to folks who want to do it, but not understanding city operations, it's not as easy.
Thank you. And please let us know if there's anything we can do to assist you in your incredible work.
I know y'all will help, thank you.
And I think some of the things that I've found, you know, obviously, we had the Supreme Court, the overturning, that was a sneeze, bless you, and we had that overturn happen. What troubled me, obviously, our, our six-week regressive ban is still tied up in, in the, in that process.
It is.
But I believe I saw that the Georgia Right to Life had, had a beating with the governor about adding on an additional personhood amendment.
Yes.
That would further, make this further restrictive, is there anything that the city of Atlanta can do, or anything that we can do to try to counter that? I mean, I don't know what the odds are of that happening.
So, we have about three weeks, my estimation, before the six-week ban goes into effect. That's the kind of the longest timeline that I've seen. I would have really need more time with legal to find out what we could do there. It's, it's tricky because we don't have, we're not the county, right, so we don't have healthcare services under our purview.
Yes.
But there are things that we can do, and I need to find out what exactly that is.
And could you speak to the amendment, because I don't think everyone has seen it? Would you kind of elaborate on what the, the personhood amendment is and how, and their...
I'm sure you could probably explain it better than I can, but I know that, of course not. I know that it deals with providing social security numbers and other things that would, that would make, so, for example, you know, in vitro fertilization, all of these things would become illegal under this personhood amendment. It would also, it could require, if you were doing in vitro, for example, that all the embryos collected, it counted as part of the state census, be given social security numbers, be provided legal representation.
So, this could, this, this could quite possibly make IVF illegal in the state of Georgia.
It, it would make it entirely difficult. I wouldn't say completely illegal, but every embryo that was harvested, I guess for lack of a better word, would have to be, become viable.
And I'm guessing, Councilmember Juan, you're going to need to speak with Emory, because I believe that they're getting a lot of calls right now for people pulling out their embryos that are stored there, which means major loss of revenue for Emory. In addition to that, I do believe it prevents the culling of eggs once they're in, which ironic that a man that wrote the legislation wouldn't understand that. But I know men carry a lot of pregnancies to term, so guys, I know how hard it is for you, but...
I won't answer that question.
Uh huh. And so, in addition, wondering about that, I know that Austin and other cities are also doing work, so we can talk about that offline around more things that we can do. The personhood amendment really does worry me, because that can, Amber, prepare yourself because you'll have a lot of work coming your way, but obviously, that means that if somebody were to take an embryo over state lines, is that trafficking, are they included in census, child, you know, child services, all sorts of different things.
All support.
Uh huh, and support. And then, I guess my other question is around Obergefell, I mean, what are the risks that we might actually see Supreme Court revisit? Because you would know this being your ties there, but what are the odds that we're going to see them attempt to overturn gay rights and gay marriage, gay relationships?
They are all protected under the Fourteenth Amendment, so we know that the Fourteenth Amendment has been brought to question in that respect, the expansion of it beyond its original tenet. So, all of these things are up for, for debate.
Okay. Well, then, we'll do everything we can to prepare for that, so. And you said that the anti-homelessness bill might look like, it looks like it will make a resurgence next year as well?
Yeah, I mean, look, these things come up, people, everyone comes to the city of Atlanta, so of course, wherever they're from is perfect, and we have to fix ourselves, so that's what we're doing.
And we ended, that was, we were at the end of the two-year cycle, so we're restarting the two-year cycle, so they all have to start from the beginning.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, at least there's some comfort in that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I for one, oh, go ahead, Mr. Winston.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, for the report. One quick question, I know that there's been a lot of conversations around rental affordability in, in the city of Atlanta, and, you know, just want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Bakhtiari, for pushing for legislation to help with legal representation, but just wanted to see if there was any conversations around the housing study in terms of looking at allies within the state legislature that, to kind of help us, you know, circumvent some of the, the state rules that kind of limit the city of Atlanta, and what we can do under our, under our purview to help renters with control?
Are you talking specifically about rent control?
Correct.
So, rent control is a difficult one, right? So, that's something that has a lot of different tentacles. We need to have a conversation about what we would consider options for rent, rent control, and we can speak to our friends across the street at the general assembly and see what they think about those.
Just a quick, I know, just a quick feedback question, are there municipalities that we can work with through you that could perhaps help us build a case and unify the case to the state to actually present legislation with, when not just being Atlanta, but multiple municipalities that have actually reached out, I think, to all the councilmembers, asking us to sign on to their efforts, so that we can, I don't know, advocate for rent and capping, maybe not rent control, because I know that, you say rent control under the Georgia State Capitol, someone might have a heart attack, but if we said, you know, capping of rent, how much it could grow in a single year, et cetera, if we could perhaps team up with municipalities to visit that?
So, you know, I'm a huge fan of coalitions. So, Georgia Municipal Association, which is where we were just last weekend spending time with our friends across the state, that would be the best option, is working with them. As you know, there's a lot of groups who are against that, so we would have to, it'd be a serious fight.
All right, Councilmember Waits.
Ms. Mitchell, is there a plan to meet with the city of Atlanta delegation for the House and the Senate to prepare for next year with respect to the conversations around reproduction, the possible airport, as well as the park care dynamic? Is there a plan? I know there were meetings during the session that were happening, and I haven't seen no activity ever since, so what is the plan moving forward to be prepared?
Yeah, so what we typically do is we get together in the mayor's office, determine what we think are the hot, you know, items that we should focus on, both for offense and defense, right? So, talking about bills we want to pass, talking about bills we don't want to pass. That process is actually starting, will be starting soon. After we get our ideas together, then we'll have a larger conversations with departments and others to determine what they think, their preferences. My personal preference is that we have a small list of items, it's much easier, you know, getting a bill passed is a little bit different than trying to get one that doesn't go across the finish line, so I want to make sure that these are bills that we know could stand up to any opposition they would face, if that answers your question.
Thank you. Two comments, one is, first of all, congratulations on your Georgia Equality Ally Award.
Thank you.
I'm very proud of you.
Thank you.
And appreciate the work that, that you are doing on that front. Second thing is just more an observation, obviously, this is a roundup conversation from the previous legislative session. I will say probably, you've got, as council, full of young members that are very engaged and interested in the legislative process, so what I ask is, as we get towards the end of the year, that as y'all are developing your legislative priorities package for 2023 session, that we stay in dialogue, that I'm sure there's a lot of input that folks are going to want to have in crafting that, rather than it just being presented to us in December that, that you want us to vote.
No, yeah, that's not my plan at all.
There are a lot of opinions up here, as you can tell.
I, I can tell.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mitchell, appreciate your work and your, your report today.
Thank you.
Next, next up is the COVID-19's funds report, Mr. Deloche, and I'm going to ask, if you don't mind, just to kind of keep it as brief as you can, we've got the printed report. But you have the floor.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jerry L. Deloche, I'm the Chief Risk Officer, I'm with the Department of Finance with CFO Bala, and this afternoon, I'm going to present the COVID-19 report for the month of June, and I promise to be very succinct, clear, concise, and to the point. Make sure I get this right. Thank you. That's just the enabling legislation, which requires us to do reporting to the committee. This slide presents an overview of all the federal funds that we have received to support the city's efforts in COVID-19. Totally thus far, we have received $1 billion, $86 million, that includes both funds that have come directly to the city, as well as funds that have gone to the airport as well. On this, I will do a breakdown of all of the programs. Up first is CRF, which is commonly referred to as CARES. This slide presents an overview of where we are with spending, as well as where we are with the money, the funds that were budgeted for each program. If you look in the lower right-hand corner, the remaining balance, it shows $944 million. That does not mean that those funds are available, it just means that we have not received receipts against the expenses, and we have until September 30th of 2022 to do that. The next slide, this is our ERA, Emergency Rental Assistance Program, where we receive funds directly from the federal government to provide emergency rental assistance. Right now, we only show ERA one and ERA two. Our ERA one, reallocated as a program for about $22.5 million, it's not listed here. We're waiting to finalize the budget with United Way and to finalize the contract with them, and hopefully, they'll be listed in our July report. The next slide is what we call ARPA, or the American Rescue Plan Act. It identifies the programs that have been approved and that are currently being funded. And, and, and Tranche One, it is showing, we received $85 million. Right now, all of those funds are obligated, and we have had expenses shown for all of those except for $4 million, and that's reflected in the lower right-hand corner. In our next report, in July, we will have a different slide, and that slide will reflect, excuse me, reflect the programming for Tranche Two programs that are currently being planned, and they are currently being implemented, and so we'll have that in our next presentation. All right, continuing further with the breakdowns for the various programs, this slide is for the first program that the airport received from the Federal Aviation Administration. It was a funded amount of $338 million, excuse me, $338 million. They have costs actually of $308 million, and currently, they have available to spend The next slide, it is a breakdown for the Department of Aviation concessions, funds that we received from the federal government. That includes $11.4 million. They have spent, obligated all of that, $11.4 million, they have actual costs, $11.4 million, and all of those funds have been expended. The next slide, it is a breakdown for DOA, ARP, American Rescue Plan. They received $324 million, they have obligated costs of $49.9 million, actual costs of $49.9 million, and they have available to spend $274 million. The next breakdown is an emergency solution grant that's being managed by the Department of Grants and Community Development. They had a funded amount of $12.7 million, they have obligated costs of $7.8 million, they have actual costs of $7.8 million, and they have an available balance of $4.9 million, and they can spend those funds through July of 2026. Next slide is, once again, a budget that's being managed by Grants and Community Development, but it is the Community Development Block Grant. They had a funded amount of $4.2 million, they have obligated costs of $3.5, actual costs of $3.5, and they have available balance of $622,000 that they have until July 28th of 2022 to spend those funds. The next slide is a HOPA grant, which is managed by the Department of Grants and Community Development. Development. The funded amount was $3.3 million, they have obligated costs of $201,000, they have actual costs of $201,000, and they have available balance of $3.1 million, and they have until March 31st of 2023 to spend those funds. Next slide is a grant with the Atlanta Police Department, funded amount was $1.38 million, they have obligated costs of $1.1 million, actual costs of $1.1 million, and they have an available balance of $260,000 to spend. Slide 15 is the nonprofit and philanthropic organizations. These were funds that were spent in the early part of the pandemic, and all of those funds have been expended. The next slide is a series of slides dealing with donations received by the city. It's broken down in FY '20, '21, and '22, and we will soon add FY '23, but for most purposes, donations have ceased, and we are just reporting now what we've already received in the past. We are required by ordinance to provide additional information identifying donors, and that's what the next several pages are related to. And I will go to slide number 21, which is a breakdown of all of the expenditures and all of the funds that we have received since the start of the pandemic. We are showing each FY '20, '21, and '22, and we will soon add FY '23. And on the left hand, you will see the sum total of the amounts of the expenditures that we have had against the various programs, and in the far left under funding, you will show that where we have received the funds to sponsor or to fund these expenses, and there is a balance between where we have received and where we have spent out. Just for informational purposes, since our last report, the major expenses that we have incurred include funding to United Way for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program for $1.8 million, and we also did a first round funding to the Community Foundation for what we will call the Forest Cove Initiative for $1.5 million. And that's our report for June 2022.
All right, questions for Mr. Deloach? I have two quick questions. The first one, but they're related, is the CRF obligation and spend breakdown, the expenditure deadline of September 30th this year, that's basically 90 days away. Looks like we still have just shy of a million dollars unspent. Are we in good position to make sure those funds get committed?
That is correct. We are in a good position to make sure those funds expended. They primarily cover the consultant remaining cost for managing these funds, as well as there is a portion of probably about $500,000 that Partners for Home has, and we are in talks with them to ensure that those funds are expended between now and then.
Ditto for the Community Development Block Grant, there's still $600,000 with an expiration of 30 days.
I'm not aware of that, but I will check back with them just to make sure and make them aware that it's the goal of the city to spend as much of all of the money as we possibly can going up to that deadline date.
You have 16 council members here, I would gladly help you figure out how to deploy $600,000 in community development grant money in 30 days. Ms. Waits.
I'd be happy to put some of those funds toward the new diversion center, the John Robert Lewis Detention Center repurposing, so we'd be happy to have those fundings, Chief Balla.
But I would say, so as we are, you know, as these deadlines start rolling up, I do encourage y'all to make sure that we've got kind of default contingency plans and to be able to deploy a lot of money very quickly. I like the notion of identifying nonprofits that we know can do the work and can absorb the capacity and deploy it quickly, so just, I'm hoping y'all are, that's part of the discipline of this grant.
We actually start probably six to nine months out, making sure that we keep track of it, and we meet with the regulators to say, probably two weeks ago, we met with Partners for Home on this very issue, because we were concerned about that, so we do meet with them to make sure.
Yeah, it'd be a shame to have to send any of that money back up when we could have deployed it here.
Understood.
All right, thank you, Mr. Deloach, any other questions? All right, seeing none, that takes us now to our regular agenda, the consent agenda, ordinances for first reading. Ms. Lynde, if you'll sound those for us, we will dispense with them during the next cycle, so Ms. Lynde.
Yes, Mr. Chair, item number one, 2201528, this is an ordinance by the Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive source selection requirements contained in Article 10 of the Procurement Code to allow the mayor's office of cultural affairs to enter into agreement with specifically curated performers, artists, and sponsors for the 2022 Elevate Public Art Festival in Atlanta, and directing that all festival revenues and expenses be deposited and expended from the council listed herein and for other purposes. Item number two is 2201529, this is an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee to ratify services rendered in connection with contract FC 8571 for on-call commercial real estate consultant services at Hartfield Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Jones Lang LaSalle Incorporated retroactively effective from November 24, 2021, and to authorize the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive procurement source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187 of Article 10 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and any other conflicting code provisions to authorize the mayor or his designate to execute on behalf of the city the Third Amendment to such contract to authorize an extension of such contract on a month-to-month basis not to exceed $975,000 for a term of one year. All contract work will be charged to and charged from accounts listed herein and for other purposes. Item number three is 2201530, this is an article, this is an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2022 Perry-Bolton Tax Allocation District Budget by transferring appropriations in the amount of $1,510,000 and zero cents to the Department of Enterprise Asset Management 2018 Public Safety Project Fund for the construction of Forest Station 22 and for other purposes. Item number four is 2201531, this is an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the Department of Finance to enter into Amendment Number Three to FC 9-334 Business License and Cashier Management System Agreement with Tyler Technologies to add funding for the 90-day extension period in the amount not to exceed $72,719 and zero cents. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number five is 2201533, this is an ordinance by the Finance Executive Committee authorizing the chief financial officer on behalf of the Department of Transportation to pay all outstanding invoices to Atlanta Services Group III, a joint venture for FC 7383B Architectural Engineering and Design Services for Geotechnical Site Investigations and Right-of-Way Services for the South Route 2060 Glenwood Avenue and South Route 42 Moreland Avenue Intersection Improvements Project in amount not to exceed $104,263 and zero cents. All invoices to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and accounts numbered listed herein and for other purposes.
Thank you, Ms. Lynde, we will, colleagues, we will have those before us during the next cycle. Takes us to H ordinances for second read. First item is 22-01499, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute the First Amendment to Cooperative Purchasing Agreement Number FC 8869 Kings III Elevator Emergency Telephone Equipment Monitoring Maintenance and Dispatch Services with Kings III of America Inc., North America, doing business as Kings III Emergency Communications on behalf of the Department of Atlanta Information Management to add four one-year renewal options plus one final renewal option, which may be exercised July 1, 2026 through May 31, 2027, and to exercise the fourth renewal option commencing July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $24,283 and 20 cents. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from funding numbers listed herein and for other purposes. I believe Tamika Neely Dudley was going to speak to this? Please, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Tamika Neely Dudley, Atlanta Information Management Technology. Legislation that is being presented today is for the Kings III Elevator Monitoring Services for all City of Atlanta buildings. This is our Second Amendment, and we're asking to enter into a four, one-year renewal plus one-year additional year agreement.
Questions? Is there a motion? Motion from Shook? Second from Waits. If there's no further discussion, let's open that vote, please.
Will everyone please vote?
It's a two-second. Can you record, Mr. Bond, is any affirmative, please?
The vote is closed.
All right, five yeas, zero nays, the motion carries, this item is approved, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item is 22-01500, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the chief financial officer to pay invoices for services rendered under Cooperative Purchasing Agreement Number Listed Everbridge Mass Notification and Emergency Alert System with Everbridge Inc. on behalf of the Departments of Atlanta Information Management, Customer Service, Atlanta Police, and Aviation in an amount not to exceed $85,056 and 9 cents. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from Fund Department Organization and Account Numbers listed herein and for other purposes. I have it down here that Mr. Denbrock was going to speak to this? No, someone else.
Good afternoon, I'm Yusuf McCaskill, I'm here in place of Director Denbrock. I'm an emergency communication specialist with Department of Customer Service. This system is our mass notification system to notify citizens and employees of emergency and public safety incidents.
I'm sorry? We do have an amendment, y'all, I'm sorry. This amendment updates the funding allocation in Section 2, so I'll move to amend, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bakhtiari. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six yeas, zero nays, the motion carries, the paper is amended. Before you walk away, that, we're doing this retroactively to November, so can you walk me through the rationale and what happened for the lapse?
Sure, of course. So in prior years, this contract was funded by 911-311, and so for budget reasons, 911, because it had been grant-funded prior to that time, 911, you know, wanted to get that off of their books essentially. So I don't know who decided to do it, but because Department of Aviation had their own separate contract with Everbridge, it made sense to put those together. And so in that process, it turned out that there were actually two expiration dates. So the amount, the amount here, shown here, is to cover the part year to sort of true up those two expiration dates.
Okay. This carries us through July 18, 2022, so what happens after that? So we have the, we have two one-year renewal options, have we exercised those yet?
Yes, we are. So at the last FEC meeting, that was on the agenda.
All right, other questions for the department? There's a motion from Shook to approve is amended, seconded by Winston, if there's no further, Mr. Bond.
When will council members have access to the system?
I don't think that there's any issues with that. You know, what I will say is I think that's something that, you know, you would need to take up with Director Denbrock. But, you know, we have talked about it, and obviously, you know, the legislation for that was done at the last meeting, and so there's no problem with that.
So.
Correct, correct.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Motion properly seconded, other discussion? Seeing none, let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six yeas, zero nays, the motion carries, this item is approved as amended, thank you. Next item, 22-01501, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the chief financial officer to pay outstanding invoices to Landmark Consulting LLC for consulting services related to cost recovery through FEMA and the CARES Act due to COVID-19 in an amount not to exceed $194,182 and 50 cents to enter into Amendment Number One for Contract Number Listed Cost Recovery and Grants Management Consulting Services in an amount not to exceed $125,357 and 67 cents. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and Account Numbers listed and for other purposes. Mr. Deloach, are you speaking to this? Come on up.
Good afternoon again. The legislation seeks to do two things. It seeks to add funds to the account, to the contract for services that they have been performing, and the second thing it seeks to do is that to pay retroactively for some invoices that were incurred in August. Previously, we had a contract with Willis Charles Watson, Landmark was serving as a subcontractor for them. We decided it was in the best interest of the city to allow Landmark to have its own contract. During the closeout, we discovered these invoices had not been paid, and so that's why we're asking retroactively. But Landmark does currently have its own contract that went on from August 15th forward.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Deloach? Mr. Shook? And what did Landmark do?
They provide consulting services related to us for the COVID-19 funds. They help us to manage the budget, they do the compliance and eligibility check for us to make sure that all of the programs meet eligibility requirements and make sure that the funds are appropriated. They also assist us with following the reports that are required for each of the programs with US Treasury.
Thank you. No questions? Is there a motion? Motion from Shook? Second from Winston, let's open the vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six yeas, zero nays, the motion carries, this item is approved. Next item, 22-01502, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee to ratify services rendered in connection with Agreement Number FC 6120, citywide janitorial services groups B, C, and D with American Facility Services beginning March 31, 2022, and to authorize the mayor or his designate to execute the Ninth Amendment to the Agreement to extend the term on a month-to-month basis for up to 12 months, retroactively effective from March 31, 2022 through March 31, 2023, and to add funds to the Agreement on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management, to the Department of Watershed Management, the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Atlanta Police Department, the Department of Human Resources, and the Department of Public Works in an amount not to exceed $2,436,280 and zero cents in accordance with Section 2-1163 of Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from accounts listed and for other purposes. Mr. Santill.
Greetings, Chair, members of the committee, Remy Santill, Commissioner of Dean. This is, this original citation went out and got canceled because the awarded proponent could not obtain insurance, so we had to cancel the contract and had to put it back out, so we're using this to cover the time to put this contract back out to the street.
All right, before I entertain questions, colleagues, we do have an amendment to this to add the Activity Function Code, Function Activity Codes, so I'll make the motion to amend, is there a second? Seconded by Bond, was that, or was it Shook? Were you throwing your voice at Shook?
Yeah, I was throwing my voice.
Okay, Shook, sorry. Let's open that vote, please, and then Councilmember Waits will have the floor.
The vote is open?
All right, six yeas, zero nays, the paper is amended. Councilmember Waits.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious, I noticed since I have been here, since January, there's been a great deal of turnover with respect to the janitorial contract. And so my question to you is, is there a preference for local individuals specific to the city of Atlanta, minority individuals, women, and African-American owned companies? I'm just curious how the contract is put out.
Well, the contract is put out for general purpose, so anybody can bid on the contract. Now, there is a stipulation within the contract that they can use minority vendors, minority subs for the job, so there is no stipulation relative to us of who that vendor picks for it, but we just generally go with what the vendors, what they bid on, on their package.
Okay, and can you speak to the reason why there's been such significant turnover specifically?
We have it within, so we have internal janitorial staff, and then we have a contract that we're experiencing the same problem. It's just labor, it's hard to get labor nowadays and get it for the, competing against a lot of different aspects of the labor market, so it's just a high turnover rate in all the way around.
And so was there consideration given to the cost of goods and supplies and the shortage in terms of labor, so maybe that we need to increase the funding perhaps to secure individuals who may be able to provide the services that we actually need?
Right, so the challenge there is that, so when the proponents bid on the contract, they bid on, in its totality, so they bid on what they were going to pay their employees, so if they're going, if they're bidding in the total package, if they're going to pay their employees $10 an hour or $15 an hour, that's it, and we go with the lowest bidder, that's what we end up getting at the end of the day.
Final question, Mr. Chair. So I know that the City of Atlanta has a policy of a minimum wage of 15 an hour, are we also including that in each contract with respect to the janitorial service?
We encourage that, but it's not something that, I can't say that it's mandatory, but we do encourage that.
Okay, but we could put together some legislation to ensure that?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I would like to.
CFO, please.
I don't think you can put in legislation to require a certain wage. I mean, I don't think you can put in legislation to require a certain wage grade that is above and beyond what the state allows. So, we've looked at this in the past about requiring specific wages, about even requiring specific employees living within a specific jurisdiction that's also disallowed by state provisions, so attorney, the city attorneys could weigh in as well.
Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, Law Department. That's absolutely correct. CFO Balla has restated the legal situation quite succinctly. We are preempted by state law from requiring our contractors or other vendors to set specific wage requirements for their employees.
Other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion? Motion from Shook to approve as amended, seconded by Winston. If there's no further discussion, let's open the vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six y's, zero nays, the motion carries. The item was approved as amended. Next item is 22-01503, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee. Is that right? Yep. Yeah, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute license agreements with certain select kiosk operators for the operation of the city's available vacant kiosks located in the city's right-of-way for a period of two years, with one option to renew for one additional year at the discretion of the city, with the selected kiosk operators to pay rent to the city in an amount of $250.00 per kiosk per month, to authorize all generated revenue to be deposited into the account listed herein, to waive the requirements of the Procurement and Real Estate Code, Chapter 2, Article 10 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, to the extent of any conflict with this ordinance and for other purposes. I believe Josh Humphries was going to speak to this.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So, about a year and a half ago, we passed some legislation to adjust the city's kiosk program, and we have a number of kiosks that are currently vacant, and our goal, these are downtown, they're the green boxes on the sidewalk downtown, for a long time, a very limited number have actually been activated. And so, we worked with the procurement office to come up with a plan to find small businesses that could operate with them. Our goal is to have the dollar amount relatively low, so it'll be $250 a month to operate within them. And then, the normal RFP process was a bit too onerous for the microbusinesses that were interested in operating, and so we worked with them to come up with an application process, selected nine kiosk operators, and our goal with this program, we're excited, is to have active storefronts within these kiosks in downtown core, you know, activate the street with economic activity and create microbusiness opportunities in the urban core. So, this legislation would allow for that to happen, and we're excited. This is in a couple of years in the making to activate a bunch of the underutilized kiosks downtown.
Mr. Shook?
And does the city manage these kiosks and the operations in-house or via a consultant?
So, the city manages the kiosks. We manage maintenance on the kiosks, and part of the package of legislation we passed a couple of years ago, we created a kiosk trust fund. We had challenges on just paying for the maintenance for them, so there are some, so all the revenue that comes in on rent will go into this trust fund and will be used for maintenance on that work, and then they'll have a license agreement with the city, similar to like how the coffee shop downstairs in City Hall was operated. It would be that type of agreement. They'll pay us and then would operate there.
So, what, nine are vacant?
That's correct.
And then, how many are?
We have seven, there's 17 total, and the others are part of the old program. So, we had some operators within the old program, we had a bunch that were sitting there not being activated. So, we created a sunset, like kind of three-year period, a phase out of those old program for the seven operators that stayed in there. So, we have seven that are still there that are under the old lottery system program we had. At the end of those three years, they'll have an opportunity to move into this license agreement monthly payment program. So, those will be active, so all of them will be activated, one some in the old program, and then nine in this new program.
How old are these structures now?
I mean, 10 to 15 years, I don't know exactly.
Yeah, it's been, is that a problem at all? Are they showing their age?
There was a lot of deferred maintenance on them, so we had quite a bit of cost over the last two years. And at this point, I would say that the infrastructure and then just the basic structures are in pretty good shape because of the work that we put into them, and we think that we can, you know, with active use and the city is kind of active hand maintaining them, that they'll continue to have a decent lifecycle on them.
Other questions? Mr. Bond?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I'm excited that you all are getting this program back online. This is a 12-year odyssey to help these small business people, so very, very pleased to see the progress.
Thank you.
All right, other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Approval.
Motion from Shook, second from Waits. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Six y's, zero nays, the motion carries. This item is approved.
Thank you.
Humphries, next item, 22-01504, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing a payment in an amount not to exceed $11,796.80 to the gallery collection and for other purposes. I understand, right, that the motion on this will be to hold. There's a little bit more work that needs to be done on the paper, so I move to hold, seconded by Shook. There's no further discussion, let's open the vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six y's, zero nays, the motion carries. This item will be held. Next item, 22-01505, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee to ratify services rendered in connection with Cooperative Purchasing Agreement number listed with Rico USA, Inc. via the State of Georgia Contract Number listed, to authorize the mayor or his designee on the, to exercise the first renewal option under the agreement on behalf of the Atlanta City Council, retroactively effective March 20, 2022, for multi-function copiers in an amount not to exceed $16,711.84, in accordance with Section 2-1163, subsection C of Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, Organization, and Account Numbers listed herein and for other purposes. I understand that Ms. Kemson Wright is available on the conference bridge, that little machine over there. Ms. Kemson Wright, are you there?
Um, yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee.
Move approval.
Well, I can't, can you explain this to us, and then particularly the retroactive piece?
Um, yes. I'm the panelist, right, and turns out to be that director. This legislation authorized the first renewal option for the Cooperative Purchasing Agreement via the Georgia Department of Administrative Services statewide contracts with the resale for the multifunctional copiers on behalf of council. The last was an oversight due to transitions that occurred earlier in the year.
Questions for Ms. Kemson Wright? Is there a motion? Motion from Waits, seconded by Juan, because Shook won't do it. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six y's, zero nays, the motion carries. And yeah, do feel better, Ms. Kemson Wright. All right, next item, number 13, 22-01506, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta enter into cooperative agreement number listed, pre-employment, physical, and drug testing with Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, contract number listed with Caduceus USA, effective March 1, 2022, through February 28, 2023, on behalf of the Department of Human Resources, in an amount not to exceed $400,000.00 annually, all work to be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein and for other purposes. Commissioner?
Good afternoon, Jeffrey Norman, Commissioner of Human Resources. This is seeking authorization to enter into a cooperative agreement with, under a MATA contract with Caduceus. This is for our pre-employment, physical, and drug testing program.
All right, questions for the commissioner? All right, there's a motion from Shook to approve. I'll second it. However, in the staff notes, it says that legislation will be amended to add retroactively in the caption and the ordained clause, but I don't see an amendment in our packet. Ms. Lindo, is that, was there another path that resolved that?
To chair, the staff.
So, it's not necessary? Okay. All right, there's a motion from Shook and a second from Juan. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six y's, zero nays, the motion carries. This item is approved. Next item, 22-01507, ordinance by Councilmember Matt Westmoreland authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to amend the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget in the amount of $7,000,000.00 by transferring funds from the general fund uncommitted fund balance to the non-departmental general fund and for other purposes. Ms. Carr, I believe, was going to, CFO Balla?
Yes, thank you, Chair Juan, Mohammed Balla, Chief Financial Officer. The purpose of this ordinance is just to replenish the non-departmental fund utilized during the budget development process to fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Mechanically, during the budget process, this ordinance was needed afterwards as we were waiting for ARPA tranche two funding to be allocated, which was already done and booked into our supplemental revenue accounts.
All right, questions for CFO? There's a motion from Winston to approve. Is there a second? Second from Bakhtiari? Just so that, yeah, Mr. Bond, yes, and I have a question as well.
What will be the balance? In the non-departmental fund?
Uh, your microphone.
The balance, I believe, in that specific line item will be close to 8.5 million, but I can get you the exact total.
Thank you.
So, just so that I understand, this is, the way the caption sounds, it is coming from fund balance, right? That's the 180 million, so we're taking that, just putting back into the budget to make this payment, and that there's potentially another funding source? Or?
No, so one of the mechanisms that was availed to the city with ARPA funding was the ability to recapture lost revenue, and we did that calculation, that revenue supplementation in tranche two already occurred. It comes in as a revenue flows all the way down to fund balance at the end of the fiscal year, so this was kind of constructed in.
So, it's basically the money comes here, comes in, and goes all the way down, and then we're moved, just getting it back up again. All right, there's a motion from Winston, second from Bakhtiari. There's no further discussion, let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Six y's, zero nays, the motion carries. This item is approved. Next item, colleagues, if there's no objection, we're going to take the next two items together, 22-01517 and 22-01518. First one is an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Winston authorizing the mayor or his designee waiving Section 2-1163C, Article 10 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, to ratify services rendered in connection with FC 8100A, insurance brokerage and consulting services with USI Insurance Services, LLC, a successor of Wells Fargo Insurance Services, USA, Inc., on behalf of the Department of Aviation, the Department of Finance, Office of Enterprise Risk Management, to enter Amendment Number 3 on a month-to-month basis for a period not to exceed nine months, effective June 16, 2022, through March 16, 2023, in the amount not to exceed $157,500.00, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, Organization, and Account Numbers listed, and for other purposes. And 22-01518, ordinance by Councilmember Jason Winston authorizing the mayor or his designee waiving Section 2-1163C, Article 10 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, to ratify services rendered in connection with FC 8100B, insurance brokerage and consulting services with Willis Towers Watson Southeast, Inc., a successor of Willis Insurance Services of Georgia, Inc., on behalf of the Department of Aviation and the Department of Finance, Office of Enterprise Risk Management, to enter Amendment Number 4 on a month-to-month basis for a period not to exceed nine months, effective June 16, 2022, through March 16, 2023, in the amount not to exceed $501,003.00, all contracted work to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, Organization, and Account Numbers listed, and for other purposes. We need to add, amend both papers to add the words retroactively in the caption and throughout. I'll make that motion to amend both items, seconded by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six y's, zero nays, the motion carries. Both the papers are amended and before us. Mr. Deloach, if you will.
Noon again, we have two papers before you. Our insurance services for the City of Atlanta are provided by USI, and the insurance services for DLA in Harsell-Jackson are provided by Willis Towers Watson. Those contracts expired on June 17, and we currently have in progress a request for proposal for continuation of insurance works and consultant services. The return date for responses to the RFP is July 11 and July 14, respectively. It is our hope and our anticipation to have in place new contract services as a result of those RFPs, and we hope to have those in place by late September or early October. Even though we asked for nine months, we plan to expedite that process and get it accomplished as early as we possibly can to have those services in place.
Questions for Mr. Deloach? So, you said that RFPs are out with responses due next month?
July 11 and July 14.
Right, and these are going to be extended through March?
We're asking for March. Our expectation and our goal is expedite the process and have those services in place by September, October.
And you said that you have it on a procurement, expedited procurement?
Well, what I mean by, yes, because right now they're out, we're waiting on the responses, and the only thing to follow up after that would be the scoring, and then to do a selection, and then to award the contract, and to come back to council for approval of the contracts.
Winging a prayer on the procurement piece, so, all right, is there a motion to approve these as amended? From Shook, is there a second? Second from Winston. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six y's, zero nays, the motion carries on both papers as amended.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, 22-01520, an ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos to amend ordinance 2100442, authorizing the carryover of December 2020 excess leave accumulation for City of Atlanta employees for up to 20 days through and including June 30, 2023, and for other purposes. Commissioner?
Good afternoon, Jeffrey Norman, Commissioner of Human Resources. This piece of legislation is seeking authorization for the carryover of accumulated leave from annual, from calendar year 2020, for up to 20 days through the end of this current, the next fiscal year, June 30 of 2023.
What's the count of folks that have, that qualify for this?
So, to give context to the request, so as the council, the city council is aware, for the majority of 2020, most employees, especially our mission-critical staff, based on those mission, based on those operational requirements, were not authorized or allowed to take advantage of any of their leave time, and so the same would ultimately be true of the non-mission-critical staff as well, because once again, being in a mandatory telework environment, those individuals really, we did not have any significant amount of folks who were able to leverage any of that annual leave time. And so, we do have that full population of folks that we don't want to penalize, and we also, as we look to make sure that we are being very thoughtful and mindful about triggers for retention here at the city, we do not want to trigger any type of response to folks feeling like they have lost time, that the city has actually prevented them from taking, and so that is why we seek to have this carryover, so now that as we kind of give ourselves the opportunity for folks who are now having that ability a little bit more, as we continue to staff up and we're able to do those things. So, you are looking at that population, you know, of employees who still are here with the city, but we want to do it for those fairness, equitable, and retention purposes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm supportive of the concept and the intent, I guess, I'm just curious as to the count, and if there is a schedule that y'all could provide?
We can show the impact of that, and then I can also let the CFO speak to the.
Councilmember, so we did do the analysis regarding the impacts of this legislation across all funds. The impact's about $918,000. For the general fund specifically, it's $510,000, and we are comfortable kind of proceeding in that manner, given the fact that we ceded our FY '23 budget based on the same. our FY23 budget based on the same preliminary assumption in FY22 that incorporated a same carryforward provision in it, and we're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I appreciate the financial impact. I'm also curious, I mean, it'd be interesting to see that scheduled department by department because that would be very revealing in terms of where our employees are really being stressed if they're not able to take vacation because of the way the work is. But I appreciate the background information on that. All right, other questions? Motion from Shook, second from Juan. Bless you, Bakhtiari. Let's open the vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six J zero nays, the motion carries. That item is approved. Next item, twenty-two dash oh fifteen twenty-three, an ordinance by Councilmember Alex Juan correcting the amendment number in ordinance twenty-two dash oh twelve sixty-four adopted by the Atlanta City Council on May 2nd, 2022, and approved by operation of law on May 11, 2022, and other purposes. This just corrects the amendment number that should have been number two instead of number one, the original legislation. Motion approved, second by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Six J zero nays, the motion carries. That item is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Texas Resolutions, twenty-two dash R thirty-eight fifty-four... Thirty-eight fifty-three, sorry. A resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to urge the mayor or his designees to conduct a feasibility study and to prepare recommendations regarding the establishment of a conservation tax option whereby property owners of any sized parcels and tracts of real property in the City of Atlanta can voluntarily enter into a conservation easement with the city to significantly reduce city property tax burden and preserve natural features of the property in perpetuity and for other purposes. Mr. Bond, did you want to speak to your paper? All right, there's a motion from Bond, second from Waits. I... Just so that I understand, if, as a property owner, the... It would be to do a conservation easement so that a percentage of my property is now no longer subject to property tax, right? Is that the intent?
That's the idea.
Okay, and so, would that impact the school or the county tax collections as well?
No, just the city's portion. Because we don't control those two entities.
So, but our easement would not impact their jurisdictions? I just want to confirm... Okay.
No, those jurisdictions have whole... Whole control over their power of taxation.
And then, is this for the Finance Department to conduct?
Yes, it should be written that way.
All right, does the administration have anything they want to say about this before we vote on the motion? Or Finance, yeah?
Just to understand, this is authorizing us to conduct the feasibility assessment and come back with a report on the impacts?
Thirty days, yes.
Can we get a little bit longer than 30 days?
How much time do you need?
Looking at the Revenue Office, Jermaine, how much time do you need? Ninety days.
Make a motion to amend throughout the paper for 90 days.
All right, there's a motion to amend by Mr. Bond to change the delivery date to 90 days. Is there a second? Seconded by Waits. All right, we have Mr. Shook to speak. Is that on the amendment?
Oh, no.
All right, let's go ahead and if there's... Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? All right, let's go ahead and open the vote to amend, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Six J zero nays, the motion carries. The amended papers before us, Mr. Shook.
Okay, yeah, I don't completely understand automatically what the public benefit would be. I mean, I can... I guess this is a way that I could reduce my property tax burden. Regarding a portion of my property, I'm not completely sure that I understand what the public benefit is.
Well, you got it exactly, that this would be a way to suspend the current rate of taxation for citizens who apply for this benefit if it were to become real and be materialized.
Okay, so it's, in effect, a setting aside of a portion of my property or your property. Theoretically, to me, that should indicate a little bit more than I just... I get to not pay taxes on it. Does the city gain any... I understand the advantage to individual property owners, but does the public... Does the city gain an advantage from all of these?
Yes.
Or the parcels all over?
Sure. The same way that we benefit when we demolish a house or we have an easement on a property for fines, eventually, the city will have an interest in that particular portion of property in much the same way we'd have a financial interest. But that's why we want to study it, to see how feasible it is.
That's what I understood. Looking forward to learning more about it. Thank you.
Of course, this was citizens-driven. Citizens who are... Who actually live in District Six brought this proposal to me, and I found it fascinating. And so, we want to study to see how viable it actually is.
All right, there's a motion from Shook to approve as amended. Is there a second? Seconded from Winston. If there's no further discussion, let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Six J zero nays, the motion carries. This paper is approved as amended. Next item, twenty-two dash... Yes, Mr. Bond, please.
I need to be excused.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here when you were able to. All right, twenty-two dash R thirty-eight sixty-three, a resolution by Councilmember Alex Juan providing for the call of a public meeting of the City Council of the City of Atlanta for consideration of certain ordinances which, if adopted and approved, will authorize the City of Atlanta to issue not to exceed $4 million in aggregate principal amount of various-purpose general obligation bonds, the publication of notice to the public of the call and holding of such meeting and for other purposes. Colleagues, we need to amend this to insert the date for the public meeting, which is August 1st, 2022. I'll make the motion to amend, seconded by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open?
Five V zero nays, the motion carries. The amended papers before us. CFO Balla, you're going to speak to this.
Yes, Mohammed Balla, Chief Financial Officer. The paper in front of you is an annually authorized bond placement for the City of Atlanta up to $4 million by state statute. In the last rounds, these have been used to fund greatly needed improvements at our public safety facilities. We will be coordinating, again, with the Department of Enterprise Asset Management to come up with the proposed usage for the 4 million. Again, this will be targeted for public safety improvements and other improvements that are identified critical by Dean, and we're looking forward to having that public meeting date set so we can discuss the projects list in detail.
All right, any questions from CFO Balla? I'll move approval as amended, seconded by Shook. Let's open the vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Five V zero nays, the motion carries. This paper is approved as amended. Next item, twenty-two dash R thirty-eight sixty-four, resolution by Councilmember Alex Juan declaring and certifying the results of the $406 million City of Atlanta General Obligation Public Improvement Bond Referendum to fund a combined $406 million in public improvement capital outlay projects consisting of, one, $213 million, $10,000 of bonds for their construction, reconstruction, renovation, repair, improvement, critical capital maintenance and equipping of public safety parks and recreational facilities, including but not limited to public safety facilities, recreational, aquatic, and greenhouse facilities, a center for diversion services, buildings and equipment for use by police, fire, and rescue and emergency medical service departments, and related public improvements with the... And the cost of compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 for such facilities and improvements and other costs incident thereto, and, two, $192 million, $990,000 of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, renovation, repair, planning, design improvement, critical capital maintenance, and equipping of roads, sidewalks, pathways, trails, and related transportation, park and playground improvements, including but not limited to public sidewalks, traffic control infrastructure and equipment, curbing, bridges, viaducts, greenway systems, playgrounds, pools, trails, paths, bicycle and transit lanes, and safety lighting, and the cost of compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 for such facilities and improvements and other costs incident thereto, requesting the District Attorney of the City... Of the Atlanta Judicial Circuit to take the proper steps to institute proceedings for the validation of said public improvement bonds as required by law, authorizing the publication of a notice of sale in bid form for the receiving of bids to purchase the Series 2022 bonds, authorizing the appropriation and use of a preliminary official statement and for other purposes. We need to amend this to insert the total vote count for the referendum and to attach Exhibits A, the certified copy of published election call notices, and Exhibit B, certified copy of official and complete copy of election results. I'll make the motion to amend, seconded by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Five V zero nays, the amended paper is before us. Colleagues, any questions on that? It's pretty straightforward as to what it does. There's a motion from Shook to approve as amended. I'll second that. Any questions? Seeing none, let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Five V zero nays, the motion carries. This item is approved as amended. Next item, number twenty-two, twenty-two dash R dash thirty-nine sixty-one, resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute the Sixth Amendment Cooperative Purchasing Agreement number listed, Uwork.com doing business as Covendis On Call IT Professional Services with Uwork.com, Inc., doing business as Covendis on behalf of the Department of Atlanta Police, Public Works, Customer Service, and the Mayor's Office COO Professional Services and Atlanta Information Management to add six months and 17 days to the term of the agreement commencing August 12, 2022, and March 1, 2023, through March 1, 2023, and to add funding in an amount not to exceed $4 million, $423,000 and zero cents. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Hi, Ms. Joseph.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Benita Joseph. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer for the Department of Atlanta Information Management. The purpose of this today is to extend our contract for on-call IT professional services.
Questions? I'm curious about the 17 days. That's... Did the previous contract just end in the middle of a month?
Well, actually, the cooperative agreement ends on March 1st and is still aligned with the cooperative agreement on that date.
All right, I got it, okay. Other questions? A motion from Shook to approve, seconded by Bakhtiari. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Five V zero nays, the motion carries. This item is approved. Next item, twenty-two R thirty-nine sixty-two, resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to issue task order number listed for contract number listed, job order contracting services small with JOC Construction LLC for the RM Clayton Monument Sign Construction, $62,426.51, and project management contingency, $9,363.98 on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management in an amount not to exceed $71,790.49. All contracted... All work shall be charged to and paid from accounts numbered... Accounts listed... They changed the wording up. And for other purposes. All right, Ms... Oh, hi.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Harold Hart, interim Director of Facilities Management with Department of Watershed. The purpose for this sign will be replacing the dilapidated current sign at the RM Clayton entrance as part of a beautification project that we have going on as well, also to provide clear communication for visitors and first responders as well.
Questions? Seeing none, motion from Shook to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Winston. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? Everyone, please vote.
Five V... Yep, sorry.
Vote is closed?
Five V zero nays, the motion carries. This paper is approved. Next item, twenty-two dash R thirty-nine sixty-three. Colleagues, there is a substitute... I'll read the substituted caption and make the motion to bring it forward. It's a substitute resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute cooperative purchasing agreement number listed, citywide integrated security and video surveillance services with Covergent Technologies, G C and E Systems Group, Inc., contract number listed, and Net Planner Systems, Inc., contract number listed, for integrated security and video surveillance services utilizing State of Georgia contracts, number listed, on behalf of the Department of Enterprise Asset Management, Atlanta Department of Transportation, Atlanta Police Department, Municipal Court of Atlanta, Department of Parks and Recreation, Department of Public Works, and the Department of Watershed Management in an amount not to exceed $4,575,254.54 expressly contingent upon the adoption and approval of the fiscal year 2023 budget. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Mr. Santill.
Good afternoon again, Remy Santill, Commissioner of Dean. This is legislation that allows us to enter into cooperative agreement with the state on our security and CCTV services.
Questions, Mr. Shook?
Okay, thank you. So, the substitute significantly increases the total. What's behind that?
And I believe that's just because of all of the other departments and the security needs that's needed for the contract, and that's what the increase is for.
Does the substitute add users?
Yes, the users are added there too as well.
All right, I should have made a motion to bring forward the substitute. So, let me do that. Is there a second? Seconded by Winston. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Five V zero nays, the motion carries. The substitute is before us. Any other questions on the paper itself from my colleagues? Seeing none, is there a motion? I'll make the motion to approve on substitute, seconded by Waits. Oh, was that Bakhtiari? Sorry. So, that'll be our last second for the day.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Five V zero nays, the motion carries. This item is approved on substitute. Thank you. Next item, twenty-two dash R thirty-nine sixty-four, resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the Department of Finance to execute agreement number listed indirect cost allocations with Maximus U.S. Services, Inc., to develop indirect cost allocation plans effective August 15, 2022, through August 14, 2025, for a term of three years with two one-year renewal options in an amount not to exceed $270,000 and zero cents. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from Fund Department and Organization number listed herein and for other purposes. Ms. Carr.
Good afternoon, Yolanda Carr, interim Deputy CFO. This is for us to enter into an agreement with Maximus to do the indirect cost audit, which is a standard audit that we have every year. So, this is for three years with two one-year renewal options.
There's a motion from Shook to approve. Is there a second? Second from Winston. Is this a new company that we're using?
It is. We utilize MGT previously, but we went out to bid, and so Maximus was the one that was most responsive.
I see the documents are in order here in the system. There's a motion from Shook, second from Winston. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Five V zero nays, the motion carries. This item is approved. Next item, twenty-two dash R thirty-nine sixty-five, resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into renewal number two with Tyler Technologies, Inc., for FC 9334 Business License and Cashier Management System for term effective July 31, 2022, through July 30, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $515,562.85. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Colleagues, we need to amend this to insert the approval date for the Second Amendment in the Seventh Warehouse Clause and insert the project number in the First Beant further resolve clause. Motion from Bakhtiari, second by Winston. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Five V zero nays, the motion carries. The paper is amended. Mr. McLean.
Good afternoon, committee members. Jermaine McLean, Revenue Director. So, this is the second and final renewal of the Tyler Technologies contract. This is for... This is for the business license and cashiering management system that we utilize. Approval would ensure that we have continuity as we move toward the FY23 renewal process.
Shook, yeah. Okay. Is this... Does this contractor manage the online portal for business license renewals?
Yes.
Is it working now?
It is working. But we are working with them to improve some of the bugs and efficiencies of the software.
My office dreads that time of year because I get a lot of calls. People saying, "I can't do it. It doesn't work." And I'm getting calls from... I mean, one day I got an email from Stephen Hawking. He said, "I don't understand how the system works." So convince me that all the bugs have been taken out of it.
Well, I'm Chief Financial Officer. I can't convince you that all the bugs have been taken out because they haven't been all taken out.
Oh, okay.
We have been in constant coordination with the provider, Tyler Communications. We have given them a list of items to tackle. We've been doing so deliberately, and they have accomplished most of the items on the list. There are some work still to go. We have a weekly coordination meeting with the Department of Finance, the Department of AIM, and continuous touchpoints with the technology provider here. I will say, on the front end, there was some missed opportunities all around to really lay out what the city's expectations are versus what the vendor could provide. And... But we've made significant progress, and some of it also entails user experience guidance that is more of a sole service platform than what our users have been used to in the past, which was a totally city-initiated process. Given that most of this is now user-initiated, we are working closely to make sure that the business owners understand the process, can utilize the process, have information at their disposal to be able to self-register and do the payments that this system is intended to do. We've come a very long way, but the final 10% seems to be the heavier lift, and we're working diligently to get over that hurdle.
All right. And I appreciate that you and other people throughout the city have been working on this because you've had to. But given the history of this, why renew? You cut your losses.
Yeah. No.
Fire them.
So at this point, that's not the best option for the city. At this point, the best option is to...
Well, for the city, maybe, but what about the people who are trying to renew their licenses? What about the public?
No, I understand. And I think with the public, we have a platform now that is doable and usable, and the process is much better experience-wise than before. But I will say, I mean, I think at this point, what we need to do is coordinate on what the path forward looks like and when we have a new RFP in place to make sure that we have the right vendor that can work on behalf of the city.
This is your way of saying that when this renewal goes through and we go through this again, and because we're down to 10%, so people... Those of us with problems should call you on your personal cell.
Call Jermaine. No, wait. Absolutely. Call the Department of Finance. We have a team in place in revenue that is dedicated to helping subs... Individuals who are still experiencing a great deal of frustration with the system. If they call to our revenue office, we'll have a team dedicated to help them through the process.
I think this is nuts, but thank you.
All right, Ms... Councilmember Waits.
After the legislation, just wanted to comment to Mr. McLean. Well, okay. So I just wanted to thank Mr. McLean for your many years of service to the city. I just recall being 18 years old and turning with the city. And just looking back, we started at the same time. I went on to work for the federal government, so just thank you. It should be, what, 30 years of service?
Real close to that, O'Shea.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any more discussion on this? Is there a motion? I'll make the motion to approve as amended. Is there a second? Seconded by Winston. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's open the vote, please.
The vote is open? She stepped out. Vote is closed?
Three yeas, one nay. The motion carries. Item is approved as amended. Next item, 22-R-3966. Resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute Special Procurement Agreement Number Listed Ferrier Services for the Atlanta Police Mounted Unit with Countryside Veterinary Services, Inc. on behalf of the Department of Atlanta Police Department pursuant to Section 2-1191.1 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinance for a term of three years with two one-year renewal options in an amount not to exceed $26,844.00 all contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department, Organization, and Account Numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Excuse me. Deputy Chief Princina Span, Atlanta Police Department. So our ferrier services are for our horses. This is how they get outfitted for their shoes. We're basically making our contract inclusive with the veterinary service and the ferrier service. So now they'll all be as one. The totals that you see is for the nine visits for our 13 horses, and then we have emergency visits also put in the proposal as well.
Questions for Deputy Chief? Is there a motion? Motion from Shook, second from Waits. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Four yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. This item is approved. Thank you. All right. I should have said four yeas, zero nays. That was bad. That was really bad. Yeah. Colleagues, so we have two dual-referred items that have come from the previous committees, but I do believe that Councilmember Bakhtiari, who just stepped out for a second, would like to be here for when we speak to this. If there's no objection, I'm going to move to item papers held in committee that are coming off that are pretty straightforward. All right. The first item is number 39, which is 22-01477, an ordinance by Councilmember Mary Norwood authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed $5,000.00 from the Council District 8 Distribution Account to the Chastain Park Conservancy and for other purposes. And without objection, I'm going to also take 22-01478, an ordinance by Councilmember Mary Norwood authorizing the transfer of $5,000.00 from the Council District 8 Expense Account to the Council District 8 Distribution Account to continue serving the Atlanta community for the public good and for other purposes. Colleagues, the author has requested that we file these two papers. So with that, I'll make a motion to file, seconded by Shook. Any discussion on those two items? So items 39 and 40. All right, let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Four yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. This item is filed. Those two items. I'm going to keep jumping a little bit. So item number 43 is the next one we're going to take, and that is the Watershed Refund Paper, 22-R-3715. A resolution by Councilmember Alex... Oh, there's a substitute. All right. I'll read the caption, substitute caption, and then make the motion. Resolution by Councilmember Alex Wan is substituted by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to refund customers for overpayments to water and sewer accounts in an amount of $315,588.63 all funds to be charged to and paid from Fund Department, Organization, and Account Numbers listed and for other purposes. Move to bring forward the substitute, seconded by Shook. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Four yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. The substitute is before us. I'll make the motion to approve on substitute, seconded by Shook. You see the detail in your packet. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, let's open the vote, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Four yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. This item is approved on substitute. All right. That takes us back to dual-referred items. The first item is 22-R-3852. A resolution by Councilmembers Keisha Shawn Waits, Liliana Bakhtiari, Andrea L. Boone, Jason Dozier, Jason Winston, and Byron D. Amos urging the Georgia General Assembly to amend Article 2, Chapter 1 of Title 42 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated regarding the Sexual Offender Registration Review Board to adopt Merriam's Law, which expands the requirements for individuals currently on the sex offender registry to better protect the citizens of Georgia and for other purposes. This came out favorable as amended out of public safety and is now before us. So I see Mr. Shook, followed by Ms. Waits.
Yeah, thank you. I actually thought I had put my name on it Monday, so I'd like to move an amendment to add mine here.
There's a motion to amend by Shook. I'd like to add my name to it as well. So that motion is to add Wan and Shook. Discussion on that? So I'll second that motion. Let's open that vote to amend, please. Yeah, motion by Shook, second by Wan.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Five yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. The paper is now amended. Councilmember Waits, did you want to speak to the amended paper before us? All right. Ms. Bakhtiari, did you want to speak to it?
This measure... I mean, for those who don't know what happened to Merriam, this is named after her. A young woman who was on her way home from working at a bar at 4:00 a.m. and was pulled up to her house allowing to be met by a man who we found out later was a registered offender and known assailant that was out, who then kidnapped her, assaulted her, and then killed her. And so this is a measure that Councilmember Waits and I have worked with Merriam's family to put forth to do everything we can to ensure that crimes like this don't continue to happen. So I urge, you know, my councilmembers to vote in favor, and I move for approval.
All right. There's a motion from Bakhtiari to approve as amended. Is there a second from Waits? The amendment that was in public safety, was that just to add more names or was there substantive amendment? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, let's open the vote on that, please.
The vote is open? Vote is closed?
Five yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. This paper is approved as amended. The next item, 22-R-3858. A resolution by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari requesting the Departments of Finance and Public Works to conduct a cost efficiency study for street-based sanitary services and general common good sanitary services to include the solid waste collection and fortification portions of permitted special event permits and others. Report of study findings and recommendations shall be prepared and presented to the City Utilities Committee no later than March 31, 2023, so that identified cost efficiencies and cost savings can be considered and incorporated into the FY24 operating budget and for other purposes. This came out of City Utilities favorable as substituted. As I understand, the substitute extended the deadline to 2024 with an interim progress report in March...
The progress report stated to go for the committee to... For council to receive a progress report no later than March 31, 2023, and a final report no later than this onset date.
All right. I do have a question on this one. I want to understand, and I apologize for not being at City Utilities yesterday, but the rationale as to why it's going to take March of 2024, so almost two years, to complete this?
Yes. Good afternoon, Chairman Wan and committee members. So the rationale behind the request...
And by yourself for the...
Excuse me. Al Wiggins, Commissioner of Public Works. The rationale behind the extension of the request extension of the request is that we need additional time, one, to procure the services of a consultant to help us do the cost study. In addition to the time that's needed for the procurement process, we need 12 months of solid data in order to perform an adequate cost analysis. So 24 months is really still a tight timeline considering the services that are being evaluated.
So, all right. So here is my perspective on this, is that I guess when I first saw this paper, I thought the intent was to supplement what we did with the solid waste fee, which sets out a two-year time for this really thorough analysis. So you've got kind of the exploration of the pay-as-you-throw, exploration of potential other methods, and that this was an interim that we could have done internally, knowing what we know. I mean, you know, this isn't an operation that we just started up last week. It's an operation that's been going on for decades. And so it just baffles me a little bit that it's going to, we can't seem to do our own internal analysis and looking for cost efficiencies in what we're doing right now, knowing that the whole full-blown Rolls Royce analysis is going on with a two-year window.
Now, so that's a great question. So the information that was obtained during the initial study is accurate information during that time. However, we have changed our level and extent of services since that initial study was completed. As you know, we have new leadership in place. We would like to do a deeper dive. So the request from Councilmember Bactieri also includes common good services as well. So my concern is I want to make sure that we perform a comprehensive study as opposed to being rushed to meet a deadline and not have substantial information in order to make better decisions. So again, I believe that 24 months is still really a strict timeline considering all of the information that we were anticipating gathering. As you know, we're looking to bring relevant software before the CUC very soon. And so again, collecting 12 months of solid data to being able to establish a trend is important to us. So that's the reason behind the extension.
I just, I don't want us to get into this analysis paralysis whereby we're just, you know, grinding time, collecting data, and then punting the decision off for two years while in the meantime, you know, we've made the decision that the general fund is going to support this. We increased the mill rate in order to be able to accommodate that. I would have preferred to have a way that within the next 12 months, we have found ways to find efficiencies and lower that cost and that burden rather than two years, again, 24 months. I understand what you're trying to do, and I understand you want to base it on good data, but, you know, I feel like some of the data we should have should be good enough for this initial stroke. Question?
No, Chairman Juan, I agree, and we have already identified ways that we can improve our day-to-day practices. We've identified ways to reduce overall cost. But again, if we were, if we're looking at the operation holistically, we would prefer to do a deeper dive as opposed to just to provide preliminary information. I understand the history behind the delay in providing information historically, and we're certainly sensitive of that. We are committed to providing updates on a quarterly basis on the progress of our investigation, but we do respectfully request the entire 24 months.
All right, I'll make one final comment on this, in that, I mean, I hope that the progress report that comes out in March of 2023 includes actions that have already been taken, identified and taken at that point that will result in an X number of dollar savings. I mean, again, I feel like there are things that you could probably decide and do in the next 30 days that would help really drive that. So, all right, with that, I'll yield, and I don't know if you wanted to say anything-
No, I just wanted to add, I agree with you. Prior to the March 2023 update, we will provide significant updates and to be able to furnish information in ways that we've improved overall efficiency of the department.
And a delta in terms of how we were operating versus savings and what we're going to be operating at next. All right, Mr. Shook.
Well, some of this angst was, you know, came out yesterday in committee, for good reason. It never hurts to, for people to hear it twice. You know, we've already been sued, so we need to, this time we need to measure twice, cut once. I get that. I guess what you're hearing from us is you're going to get 24 months, but don't be embarrassed if you come in here before that.
Understood.
Other comments? All right, there's a motion. Mr. Waits, see if I want to say. There is a motion to approve from Shook, seconded by Bactieri.
I just did want to reiterate and stress to council that overall efficiency measures are things that we coordinate continuously on, and part of the FY24 budget development process will have factored in efficiency measures that have already been in place by the department. So myself and COO Gordon have been coordinating closely to make sure as we construct next year's budget, that the efficiencies that have been realized and identified by the departments are baked into the next year's FY24 budget. So that would show in real time kind of some of the same suggestions that council has, is as you're continuing your normal operations, what efficiencies have you identified and have you implemented and put into place? And as Commissioner Wiggins mentioned, during the quarterly updates, they'll be giving updates on efficiencies that have been put in place. So I just want to kind of let the council know that the administration has coordinated with us to make sure that we continuously look for efficiency opportunities throughout the departments. And that's, that will be one thing that we'd bring forward ahead of the FY24 budget is which efficiencies have been identified and have been baked into that budget development process.
All right, I've been instructed by the council staff that I need to read the substituted caption, and so I'm going to do that very quickly. A resolution requesting the Departments of Finance and Public Works to conduct a cost study for street-based sanitary services and common, general common good sanitary services to include the solid waste collection and fortification portions of permitted special event permits and others. A progress report of the findings and recommendations shall be prepared and presented to the City Utilities Committee no later than March 31, 2023, and a final report shall be prepared and presented no later than the sunset date of the original legislation so that the identified costs may be considered and incorporated into the FY24 operating budget and for other purposes. All right, with that, we have a motion to approve from Bactieri, seconded by Shook or vice versa. Let's open that vote, please. Bless you.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Five yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. This item is approved as substituted. So thank you, Commissioner. All right, then, next item is under held, and that is item 22-R-3712, a resolution by council members Marcia Collier Overstreet and Andrea Alboon establishing the City of Atlanta Procurement Reform Task Force for the Promotion of Public Trust in accordance with Section 3-401 of the City of Atlanta Charter to be charged with evaluating the efficacy of the City of Atlanta's Procurement and Real Estate Code, administrative regulations, policies, and procedures related to procurement, contract compliance, and vendor relations with surveying national models of government procurement, and with making written recommendations to the mayor and the Atlanta City Council for meaningful reforms in these areas to provide that the Procurement Reform Task Force shall be comprised of residents of the City of Atlanta and leaders experienced in government, business, or nonprofit service delivery, and expertise in government contracting, and shall be facilitated by a firm or professional experienced in working with governments to develop innovative strategies and implementing solutions to complex challenges, to establish that the Procurement Reform Task Force shall make a report with a detailed strategy and specific recommendations to the mayor, council president, and the Atlanta City Council no later than December 31, 2022, and for other purposes. All right, colleagues, had conversations with the author of this paper, and I know there are members of the administration that would like to speak to this as well, but what I'd like to do is go ahead and amend the paper. You got, you received that in your packets today. What that does, first is adds authors to this, co-sponsors, I believe it's everybody except for Councilmember Norwood wanted to be added on. Second thing is also changes the composition of the committee to add the Chair of the Finance Executive Committee as well as the Chief Procurement Officer, as well as the Chief Operating Officer or her designee. And then third one was to establish kind of a delay in the first convening time. I think there was a conversation around 60 days, but I think we're moving, potentially moving that to 90. But let's go ahead and get the, let's keep the 60-day, and then let's talk with the administration if we need to continue adjusting we can, because that's what is in the packet that was provided to everybody. So I'll make the motion to amend, seconded by Bactieri. Any discussion just on those amendments, or at least amending the paper before we discuss this? All right, let's open the-
The vote is open?
Hang on a second, hang on a second.
Yeah, I've got a question. So, you know, I've been picking up a lot of different vibes from a lot of different directions about who said what to who and who's okay with what. So I need a little bit better understanding when I'm voting. Is it 60 days, 90 days? We're going to discuss 90 after we adopt this? I mean-
No, 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 we're just amending the paper right now, and then we'll have the chance to, once the administration comes up, we can continue talking about the 60, 90 day, or if that even makes sense.
So it's 60 now?
Right now, it's 60.
Okay.
That was what was brought forward from the author originally. Let's open the vote to amend, get the amended paper before us, and then we'll, we can deliberate on it. Oh, four ones, four yeas, one nay? The paper is amended now before us. All right. So with that, I'll invite COO Ms. Gordon to come up and speak to us.
Good afternoon, Chairman Juan and committee members. Lisa Gordon, Chief Operating Officer. As it relates to the administration, I want to be clear that we're fully supportive of improving the city's procurement process. We have the shared goals with the City Council for ethical, transparent, efficient, and effective procurement. To that end, we have hired Mr. Majumdar, and he is on his official third day here. One of the reasons we hired him is not only is he a procurement official, he is an expert globally. He is Six Sigma certified, which means he has worked with other organizations to streamline and to assess their procurement processes. And we also have had several other recommendations. So the administration has recommendations from the city auditor, from the transition committee report, and Mr. Majumdar has already started assessing some of these reports and information. And so our request to the committee is that we ask that the legislation be held for a work session to inform what that task force would be, so that it's aligned with all of these other recommendations and reports that have come forward. And we would allow, we would ask that we would have not to exceed 90 days to work on that with you and to come back and share that information in discussion. And so it's a little different, but I think we all want the same things. We want an efficient procurement process. We want transparency. We want ethical behavior, and we want quality controls in place so that our government can be best-in-class. And I think that is one of the reasons why we have Mr. Majumdar, I said his name wrong, Majumdar, joining us so that we could bring that level of expertise to City of Atlanta. And so we hope that you would consider that request.
So Ms. Gordon, while you're up there, I think I'll start, I don't know if other council members are going to want to speak to this, but help me understand the benefit of the work session delay versus kind of a delay in the first convening. Granted, the CPO will be on the committee that is doing the work. You know, I understand there was a lot of conversation around wanting to give some time and space for him to get his legs under him and really, and potentially even starting to implement some of the changes. I guess where I'm struggling a little bit is a 90-day delay, holding up the paper for a work session pushes this even further out. And this is an area where you've heard time and time again during our meeting today, the city, other city processes are now kind of adjusting themselves to the length that it takes for procurement. And you have, and you and I spoke earlier today, you have to understand the pressures that we are under from the public in terms of how delays in our procurement process inhibit progress in the city in general across transportation projects, across just other things moving forward. So I'm trying to understand why we can't move concurrently with that concept of a delay first convening versus holding this completely for 90 days and setting us that far further back.
Right. I think the purpose of the work session is really to understand the current state and where the gaps are, and what are things that are already underway. I'm not sure if the council's aware of some activities that are already underway. There are some recommendations just in some of the language, and there are efforts underway. There's assessments that have been underway. Some may be partially implemented. Some may be on the way to be implemented. And so I would recommend that if we had the work session, we can have the conversation about what should be the focus of the task force, because I do think there are other issues that may or may not be known or discussed that could impact the ability to have the efficiency and have a best-in-class system. So right now, we have on the surface what we understand as some of the issues, but we haven't really had that opportunity to present it and to assess all the other bodies of work. So your recommendations that the task force would come up may already be in the city auditors, in the transition report, and in some other work that's already been underway. So just making sure that everyone is on the same page in terms of what has already been recommended, what is in process, and what do we want the future state to be. I would love to hear that from council in terms of, you know, what are some of the issues that you are most concerned about that we should prioritize? And I would love for you to hear from the administration's standpoint what things we would like to prioritize that are maybe inhibitors to the overall outcome and progress that we want to have.
I'll yield to my colleague, Councilmember Waits.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly have a great deal of respect for the work that you do, as well as the administration. I can speak for, serving as the post-three-city-wide person, that I believe this paper is necessary and urgent. It's my hope, given that I believe you will be sitting on the task forces, that those recommendations can be made at that time, and we could move, as the chair has indicated, concurrently, and those recommendations from the work session will be implemented into this paper. But I think to hold the paper, given the challenges that we've seen and the fact that the City of Atlanta's procurement process has probably been broken my entire lifetime, and I'm 50, but nonetheless, it's my hope that we can move forward today.
You're 50 years young, and we hope that it would be fixed. I would say that we inherited this system just as much as council did. And in order to have effective transformation of our city government, I think we have to be deliberate and intentional. And I think we have to have, you know, the leadership in place, and we have to have the understanding in place. And as much as it is just as painful for you as it is for us in the current state, we want to see that corrected, and we're committed to correcting that. I just think we have to make sure we are starting with all the same information. And so that's, and especially having someone that's been here three days, I would want to give them an opportunity as well to weigh in and bring that global expertise that we haven't had here.
All right, Councilmember Winston.
Thank you. And this is more from my colleagues, I would say. You know, I'm fully in support of this task force. I think it's something that's desperately needed. I do find it a little problematic that none of us, and I can't speak for everyone, but the majority of us, I would say, have not even met Mr. Majumdar, to have an opportunity to talk to him, to see what his goals and expectations are for the procurement process for the City of Atlanta. And so we would be creating a task force, you know, without having an opportunity to speak with him and find out some of those goals. So I'm, I'm in full support of the intent of this. I wonder about the timing and thinking it's something that maybe, you know, I don't want to punt the ball on, but I think it may be, you know, in our best interest to have a conversation with him and maybe do something that's in a public forum, where we talk about our goals collectively in pushing the procurement process and making it better for the City of Atlanta.
Thank you, Ms. Winston. Mr. Shook.
Well, I understand. You know, I'm from around here, so I'll plead guilty to being a part of creating many task forces, which all take 90 days to dance the minute waltz and don't accomplish a whole lot. I understand he just got, is he here?
Yes. Let me introduce him.
That'd be great.
Mayor and council.
Welcome to the Finance and Executive Committee.
My third day, I'm learning a lot, and I've learned a lot.
Yeah, come up, I'm going to let you say hello.
My third day so far, in three days, I've learned a lot, and I continue learning, and I see all the gaps. So it was very nice for me to be here, to listen to all the deliberation that's going on, and also meet my team members to evaluate their three Cs, capabilities, competencies, and capacity. I think one of the things that we need to do is map the three Cs to three Ps, which is people, process, and product. I think that mapping is broken. For the first two days, it was clearly evident that none of the skills and competencies that, you know, that the organization has as a department, as individual, is mapping into people, process, and product. You know, one of the first thing that we need to do is create a process that is repeatable and reproducible, that can be used in every single commodity that we source. One of the things that I've noticed just in two days is, you know, there are things being done in a lot of different ways. That is not how a world-class organization works. We need a process, a seven-step process or five-step process, which world-class sourcing organizations use, that is repeatable and reproducible. So, you know, there are a lot of opportunities that we're looking at. We're looking at making the process very transparent. And I also give example where, you know, maybe come up with a tracking system, like a UPS tracking system, where you know this phase is complete. It goes notification to all the stakeholders that this has been completed. Second step, third step, fourth step. It's like you can, you know, you can log online and see where is the process for the sourcing going on. That will make it very transparent. Everyone gets notified of where we stand in the process, what are the tasks that have been completed in that process, and, you know, and the notification, and the justification of why these steps have been done. So, you know, there are a lot of opportunities, there are a lot of opportunities that I, that I saw in the first two days. It does take time to transform, but it will transform. My commitment to this committee is that we will transform. We will build a world-class organization, and we'll build an organization where people will seek employment with City of Atlanta Procurement Department.
Okay.
You know, I've worked with GE, I've worked for Delta Airlines, I've worked for Cap Gemini. In every organization that I've worked, it was all about transforming organization from a tactical organization to a strategic organization.
Have you ever worked for municipal county government?
I have not, but I want to bring in the best practices here to make those changes. There are certain limitations. There are certain challenges, but I think if we, if we put forward a clear and transparent process using all the best practices that I have done, and tailor and custom-fitting it to the public sector, I think we can create a world-class organization.
I appreciate that, and it's nice to meet you. Look forward to working with you. Understand, we want to partner with you desperately. I'm 21 years into wringing my hands about the procurement process. I'm not going to do it for another 21 years. My problem I'm having with this request for a delay is for me, I'm going to be made to feel like I really don't care as much as I've expressed over the last 21 years. So actually, what I've heard today convinces me of the need for us to send our message from the governing body, that we don't accept the status quo. It's got to be fixed. from the governing body, that we don't accept the status quo, it's got to be fixed. I'm sorry if you feel rushed a little bit, but, you know, this is personal for me. The longest-serving council member in Atlanta history sat in the seat I now occupy. He went to federal prison. Everyone in my district remembers who that was in the ugly circumstance. It was broken then, it's broken now. I look forward to helping you fix it tomorrow. I will request, though, that we push back the timeframe from 60 to 90.
Why don't you go ahead and make that amendment, and then make that motion to amend?
Yes, I move.
Second?
Second.
Second from Bactiari. All right, let's go ahead. We're not done deliberating yet, so don't worry. We're just amending the paper to extend that from 60 to 90 days. Motion by Shook.
By Bactiari.
Second by Bactiari. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Five yeas, zero nays, the motion carries. The paper has been amended again. The delaying first convening will be 90 days instead of 60 days. All right, Councilmember Bactiari, you have the floor.
Yeah, so, one, very nice to meet you. I'm sure we're going to get along great. As you see, I'm very professional. But to all the points that the COO made, I completely understand them. I see this, the 90 days, as a great compromise because we can still pass this today and have it go to full council, but still have a procurement work session before the first meeting, especially if we push it back those 90 days. And then, which, believe me, 90 days is going to feel like 20 years. And then, well, and then we can also still, you all, the administration, the COO, you commissioner, will still be able to present your recommendations to the task force. So I see this as a win-win across the board, but I think the 90 days will give us that. And I'm sure we're happy to set the work session date with you before the end of the week, so.
All right. All right, some more kind of sausage-making here. Ms. Lindo brought up a good point, that if we're pushing the first convene date back 90 days, that puts us into October, right? So asking for December 31, 2022, delivery date is really unreasonable. So I don't know if we, well, we should amend that, and I'm going to propose that we amend that to June 30th, 2020, June 30th, 2023. That way, it kind of coincides with the end of the fiscal year. That might just be a kind of a logical place for that to land. So I'll make that motion to amend, seconded by Bactiari. If we can open that vote, please.
The vote is closed?
All right, five yeas, zero nays, the motion carries. The paper has been amended to reflect that. All right, so then, the completely amended paper is now before us. The one comment I'd like to add to this, though, is, like Mr. Shook said, I hope you see, the administration sees this as a compliment to everything that y'all are doing, that we're essentially, you mentioned kind of the transition team findings that have benefited and guided your work. I feel like we're almost offering you a transition team for your work, giving you 90 days to kind of get your legs under you. But now, you'll be part of this working group going forward, as will the COO, based on that information, your expertise, that can then tap into other resources that we're trying to bring to the table for you. So I hope y'all look at it that way, not as a, this isn't meant as a, I don't know what the right word is, but a constraining or punitive thing. It is really meant as, let's work together to improve it. Here's a tool that we feel like we can offer you, and that we're ready to walk down the path with you. But, Ms. Gordon.
Yes, I think the administration has been clear that we are about collaboration and partnering with city council because we serve citizens, and we all think that's the priority. It's, one of the issues is making sure that we're being deliberate and we're being transparent with how we view and what our perspective is on certain issues. So certainly with procurement, it's complex, it's complicated, and people have perspectives and opinions, and they may or may not be aligned with actually what is in place and what is happening. And so we just wanted an opportunity, and I think we will have that within that timeframe, to give you all the information so the task force is starting and everybody is on the same, they're starting from the same point of information, as well as best practices around the country, which I think may be a challenge to City of Atlanta because we've adopted many rules and many constraints that work in opposition to the outcomes that we want to see with the procurement process and with our teams. So we look forward to working with you. And myself and Mr. Majumdar will be there with Bellzah.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Mr. Shook.
Has the administration forwarded the needed communication to the clerk's office to?
Yes, I will work with Mr. Pace on that. It's in the process, okay.
Has he already been entered into elms?
Okay. It is in process, and in the meantime, we will be scheduling meetings for each of the council to meet our new chief procurement officer. It'll be important, and I think that's a great opportunity to share your views and perspective, and maybe provide, you know, details and examples that will be helpful as we move forward.
Well, okay, we want to get going. I'm just trying to make sure that the process is going. You'll learn to love us.
All right, the amended paper is before us. I'll make the motion to approve as amended. Is there a second? Seconded by Waits. Let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed?
Five yeas, zero nays, the motion carries. The amended paper is approved. All right, Ms. Lindo, does that conclude all of our legislative items?
Does, Mr. Chair.
All right, are there other announcements or comments for the good of the order? I do have one. Colleagues, just a reminder that if you have not filed your personal financial disclosure form, it's due tomorrow. There is no grace period for this one, so be sure you get it done. There is one for the campaign contribution form, that you get till next week. Other comments? Ms. Waits?
Yes, the Public Safety Committee will be holding, the citywide commission will hold its first meeting on tomorrow at 6:00 PM. So look forward to having everybody join us.
Other comments? All right, thank you very much. We stand adjourned.
Morning, it is ten o'clock, however. We are lacking a quorum, so let's please prepare to stand ready to make by. To stand by. Ask and you shall receive. All right, this is the June twenty-eighth regularly scheduled meeting of City Utilities Committee. I'm Howard Shook, Chair of the Committee. To my left is Vice Chair Dustin Hills. To my right is Andrea Boone. And to her right is Antonio Lewis. So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And make a motion to approve the agenda, second by Mr. Lewis. Let's open that vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Second by Mr. Hills. Let's open that vote.
Vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays.
Morning, it is 10 o'clock, however. We are lacking a quorum, so let's please prepare to stand ready to make by. To stand by. Ask and you shall receive. All right, this is the June 28th regularly scheduled meeting of City Utilities Committee. I'm Howard Shook, Chair of the Committee. To my left is Vice Chair Dustin Hills. To my right is Andrea Boone. And to her right is Antonio Lewis. So with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And make a motion to approve the agenda, seconded by Mr. Lewis. Let's open that vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I'll now make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. Seconded by Mr. Hillis. Let's open that vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have one speaker for public comment.
Okay. And who might that be? I don't have the list in front of me.
Brother Anthony Mohammed.
Okay, Brother Mohammed.
Well, in the last year, you come down here, y'all like to start sometime before we get started. I am Brother Anthony Mohammed. Or I am better, I am an ancient believer. I command my spiritual energy to teach my soul consciousness every day. And one of our ancient ancestors named Mesiru. And I'm not a believer no more in religion, the Roman Catholic Church religion, from Genesis Revelation. Not one person, not one human person were born from the womb of a woman. My Admetra Hotel, Assalamu Alaykum. Mr. Dickerson, Committee Counselor, we had a problem in 2017, almost five years in July. It was signed and said by members of this committee to make sure that what the road would get macro-serviced about September 2017. Public Utilities, I bring that to you, because you have these people that you can be able to tell. This legislation was passed, and I suppose the money was appropriated. So I'm asking Mr. La Tony, your Lewis, Miss Overstreet, District 11, let someone come in and aid you. Because this is unfair. And then I come back to say, Mr. Dickerson, I've been reading in 1712, you had the letter written by Willie Lance to keep the indigenous dark people. He said, I can tell you plantation owner in Jamestown, Virginia, how you can control them for another thousand years. That American descendants of ex-slaves, the dark people. After passing of that 104 years ago, or having that meeting in the year 1816, Gulliwalls was started by General Andrew Jackson. General Andrew Jackson was responsible for a killing of women's and children in the Gulliwalls. So I ask you, as Mr. Stacey Abram has said, because the Democratic Party was founded by Andrew Jackson, and the Democratic first president was Andrew Jackson. He didn't have any love for dark people then, and the Democratic Party is not being fair to dark people today. So I ask this council, City Council, to stop denying the law 50% of our population, which is the majority, from having social, economic empowerment, housing, political support from legislature. You legislators come here and not doing for the benefit of your people, and especially one that is of American descendants of ex-slave. There's time to do right by us. We got people living on the street, do you see? You come down here, and your people, the majority of the population are doing well. And the majority of those that above the 50% I talk about are doing well. But what about the poor? I greet you. Assalamu alaykum. Asha, Asha, and Asha.
Thank you. We have no quarterly reports, is that correct?
Correct.
Excellent staff work. Could you please send our lone first read?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item number 1, 2201526, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee to ratify services rendered in connection with special procurement agreement SPS 1200424, Identity Verification and Deposit Assessment Services with Online Information Services Incorporated, beginning May 26, 2022, and to authorize the mayor or his designate to exercise a second renewal option on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of one year retroactively effective from May 27, 2022 through May 26, 2023, for time only, in accordance with Section 2-1163, subsection C of Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta, code ordinances and for other purposes.
Thank you. This will come back to us at our next meeting. That takes us to regular Agenda Section G. Could you send our first ordinance?
Item number 2, 2201481, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to amend the FY 2022 Water and Wastewater Renewal and Extinction Fund Budget in the amount of $1,500,000.00 to transfer funds from the Watershed Reserve for appropriations and add funds to the aesthetic, concrete, pavement milling and resurfacing project and for other purposes.
And, oh, Commissioner, it looks like you have a monopoly on presentations today. So tell us about this paper, please.
Good morning, Chairman Shook, members of City Utilities Committee. It's Makita Browning, Department of Watershed Management. Purposes of legislation is to appropriate funds for the asphalt, concrete, paving, milling and resurfacing contract in an amount of $1,500,000. The intent of this annual contract is to have a contracting mechanism to provide supplemental support to our Office of Linear Infrastructure Operations with completing right-of-way restoration and repairs where water and sewer work has disturbed existing pavement, and to ensure and maintain the structural integrity of disturbed areas within the roadways. Subject to your questions.
Yeah, I'm curious. What is the system for the department to try to figure out when a street that's been worked on needs only selected patches, even though it may be a square that's big out in front of every house, versus just redoing the whole street?
So, we're completing our repairs that are performed by the Office of Linear Infrastructure. So you have a crew that will complete the actual linear pipe repairs. And then there'll be a crew that will follow to provide support with some restoration. But there's some restoration that we will defer to a third-party vendor, such as if we've got a lot of restoration to do within a G-dot roadway, we typically want to get in there and get out pretty quickly.
Sorry, go ahead.
And if there's any supplemental support for if any complaints come in about any depression and any failed patches that we may have done previously, we'll have a contracting mechanism to try to get the issue resolved.
And I'll go to Mr. Hillis next. But what accounts for what seems to be a pretty typical gap in between the time, you know, initial, an initial hole gets filled, and then, you know, it gets the final coating. Sometimes it's months later. Why is that?
It should not be months later. Typically, you know, the construction contracts or the internal crews will do the repairs. They'll backfill, they'll plate it temporarily, understanding that we've, you know, got work going on throughout the city, so they try to schedule the work. But sometimes it gets backlog, I admit that. But it absolutely shouldn't be months, it should be just a couple weeks.
So it's likely to achieve historic landmark status, I think. Mr. Hillis.
Thank you, Chairman Shook, Mr. Browning. My question, not necessarily specific to internal to DPW, or excuse me, DWM, or your contractors, but how do you all set the policy of holding private contractors accountable when they go and, you know, dig up a water line or connect to a sewer line and hold them accountable to that restoration? I know I've talked to other professionals, and they have a very strict policy, where if you come within a foot of the center line of the road, you have to redo the whole width of the road, et cetera. So how do we go about setting a policy and enforcing it?
So there are standard details that are in place that really dictate how we restore the roadway back post-repairs. There's also inspectors that are on-site to oversee and make sure that the contractor's work is done to get quality and standard pursuant to city's standard details, so.
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve. Seconded by Mr. Hillis. Seeing no other questions or comments, let's open that vote, please.
The vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays, this item is found favorable. Item number 3, 2201482, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to amend the FY 2022 Series 2021 Water and Wastewater Commercial Paper Notes Budget in the amount of $50,000.00 to transfer funds from the 2021 Water and Wastewater Commercial Paper Notes for appropriations and to add funds to the SG4 East Lake Outfalls, East and West, East Lake Trunk Replacement and Sugar Creek Trunk Capacity Relief Project and for other purposes.
Good morning again, Makita Browning. Purposes of legislation is to appropriate funds for the Sewer Group 4 East Lake Outfalls, East Lake Trunk Replacement and Sugar Creek Trunk Capacity Relief Project. This is a consent decree project that will continue efforts to upgrade the city's trunks and outfall sewers pursuant to our First Dominican Consent Decree. The work will remedy defects observed during the city's sewer system evaluation survey, reduce the amount of strenuous flows entering the system, eliminate sewer overflows, and add much-needed system capacity to accommodate future growth. The defined scope of work will take place within the Sugar Creek Sewer Basin and will consist of upgrades to approximately 27,388 linear feet of trunk and outfall sewers, ranging in diameter from 18 inches to 36 inches, utilizing various proven traditional and trenchless techniques to complete the necessary upgrades. And I think a map should have been included in your packet. If it hasn't, we can definitely provide that to you, subject to your questions.
Well, I was going to request, and are there five sewer groups? How many sewer groups are there?
Six.
Okay, six. So what you might want to do is, I think those of us who have been around have inherited a map showing, you know, the lay of the land, but the new members, especially the district members, might find it interesting. So if you could just refresh all of us with those maps. And let me ask this, so most of Buckhead was in Sewer Group Number 1, because that's, was the most overburdened. There was a lot of very overburdened sanitary sewer sheds there. And so that got tackled fairly early. What's the lifespan expected to be for these kinds of repairs?
So for Buckhead, to your point, it comprised mostly of Sewer Group 1. There was a little bit of Sewer Group 3. The small diameter work that is sought approval for, albeit there's another contract that's coming up, that's situated in Buckhead as well. And typically, these contracts, we're kind of chipping away at it over time. The contracts will range between 12 to 18 or 24 months in duration, so.
Is 30 years kind of a typical number?
For.
Life expectancy of the repairs?
Well, when we put new pipe in, minimally, the expected life cycle of the pipe is minimally 50 years. As you know, we've got pipes in the ground that are 100 years old, so.
So some of the first sewer groups were under a, you know, restriction or requirement that, you know, for every gallon you put in, you had to take three out or five out, or whatever. We're past all that, aren't we now?
We're still held to that criteria. Obviously, it's important for us to do these repairs so we can minimize the amount of strenuous flows that are getting into the system. So the whole point of it is to reduce, to address those structural repairs, reduce the ionides getting into the system so that we can have reserve capacity for future growth.
Questions, comments, motion? I'll move approval. Seconded by Mr. Hillis. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays, this item is found favorable. Item number 4, 2201483, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to amend FY 2022 Series 21 Water and Wastewater Commercial Paper Notes Budget in the amount of $666,472.81 to transfer funds from the Series 2021 Water and Wastewater Commercial Paper Notes for appropriations and add funds to the Sewer Group SG4 Diameter Rehabilitation Project Contract B and for other purposes.
So I'd had a request if we could take both items, 4 and 9, since they're related?
On the money paper. Yeah, that's fine. Could you send that caption for 9?
Sound item number 9? Item number 9, 22R3958, a resolution by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an agreement for IFBC 1220176 Sewer Group Small Diameter Rehabilitation Contract B with Rockdale Pipeline Incorporated, Intercity Municipal Services Corporation, a joint venture on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term to commence on the date. A notice of proceed is issued for a period of 488 calendar days for substantial completion and 548 calendar days for final completion in the amount not to exceed $22,671,075.66. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the fund department organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. And this item will need to be amended to attach to IPRO report.
Let's talk about the ordinance first, the project.
Good morning again. The purposes of legislation is to seek legislative approval for work to Rockdale Pipeline, Intercity Municipal Services Corp., for the Sewer Group 4 Small Diameter Rehab Contract B in the amount of $22,671,075.66. This is the sister contract to Contract A that was approved a couple of cycles ago. This is a consent decree project that will continue efforts to upgrade the city's existing small diameter sewers pursuant to the First Dominican Consent Decree. The defined scope of work will take place within the Peachtree Creek and Nancy Creek Sewer Basins. It will consist of upsizing or upgrades to approximately 32,401 linear feet of mainline sewers, utilizing various proven traditional and trenchless technologies for the necessary upgrades. And again, I think a map should have been included, but if not, I can provide that. There was an IPRO report that was transmitted, and subject to your questions.
And could you talk about the contractor selection with IPRO?
So it went through, you know, the normal procurement process. We had approximately three bidders.